All right. You forgive her?
Yep.
There's Mr. Pratt.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. So we're waiting for Curtis. Ursula will not be here tonight, so there'll be six of the school committee members. Curtis usually pops in right at the last possible moment. It's very punctual. There he is. Hi, Curtis.
Hello.
So as soon as it starts, it turns six, we can get started because everybody is here. I think.
We were Cindy will be joining and I don't know if Jake is going to come on or if his co-chair is going to come on to talk about their school improvement plan, so.
Okay. All right, so I think we can get started. I would like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, June 10th. It is 6:00 PM. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGLC 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. The meeting will be broadcast on Willie Net TV Channel 1302 in Williamstown, and it will be posted on the Mount Greylock Regional School District YouTube channel within 24 hours of the meeting. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation, resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Next up on our agenda is public comment. We do not have anyone signed up for a public comment tonight, so we will move on to the student spotlight.
In order for me to share the student spotlight, it's a recorded video message. And for me to share it, I will just need screen sharing permissions.
I just made you a co-host, so that should get you there, right?
Yep, I think I'm going to be there. All right. Can you see Charlie?
We can.
Charlie McQueeney of Mount Greylock Regional School. Here we go.
Hello, and good evening, everyone. At this time tomorrow, when you all are watching this video, I will probably be making a clutch of myself at prom, so I can assure you all I'm not in a totally enviable position of missing out on a school committee meeting. That being said, though, this will be my last update as the student council representative, which is a bittersweet moment for me. I've greatly enjoyed being able to come to these meetings to advocate for matters that are important to students and to share with you all a little glimpse of the student perspective at Mount Greylock. I want to thank each of you for the time you've taken to listen to me, your questions, actions, and dedication to the school district. I have great faith that you will be just as responsive to the concerns of next year's student council representative, who I'm very excited to announce is going to be Molly Sullivan. Molly has been an instrumental member of student council, and I'm sure she will do a far better job at this than I ever did. But before I hand things over to Molly for a proper update, I'd like to leave with you all with two final thoughts. The first is a bit of a request, and that is, over the summer in the course of the next school year, this committee seriously examined moving back the Mount Greylock start time. My two biggest takeaways from remote learning were, one, the importance of in-person instruction, and, two, how much students valued the extra 30 or 40 minutes of sleep they got from not having to get up and commute into school. This is an issue that has been incredibly important to students for many, many years, and the science on this has only become more clear. But I believe this committee can be the committee that's responsible for taking this important step and moving back the start time. The second thought I'd like you all to, I'd like to leave with you here, are some of the closing excerpts from A History of Williamstown and the surrounding area, written by Robert Brooks. I'm paraphrasing a bit here, but Brooks roughly writes, "But probably the most effective single force in bringing and holding the town," I should say towns, "together is its public school system. It is impossible to overlook the unifying democratizing force which free public education has brought to bear upon the character of the community. This unbroken thread of common purpose unites the town. Within this common purpose lie our hopes for a better community, a better nation, and a better world. As this committee moves forward, I only ask that you remember the incredibly unifying and equalizing force free public education can have. Thank you all very much for your time. I'm very pleased to hand things over to Molly now."
That was great. Molly, we will turn it over to you. Welcome to the school committee meeting.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm super excited. Um, I, there's not, I can't really follow that, but I will try my hardest. So I'm a sophomore at Greylock. I will be a junior next year. I've been on the student council all years of my high school, so next year will be my third year on student council, and I loved every step of the way. I enjoy making changes in the student bodies' lives, and I enjoy taking their ideas and bringing them to student council. I'm also in Registered Educate Vote, which is a club, I'm sure you guys know about it. It kind of says it in the name. I'm in the Greylock Multicultural Student Union. I write for the Greylock Echo, and, um, yeah, I mean, I play soccer and basketball, so I love getting involved. You could probably find me in the library a lot, finding new books from Miss Barrett, but I'm super excited to be here and to be with you guys next year, and thank you so much for having me. I don't know if you want me to tell you anything else, or if you guys have any questions, but thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Any questions from the committee for Molly? We're excited to have you join us, and we will miss Charlie. Okay, moving on to approval of minutes, May 13th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the May 13th, 2021 minutes?
So moved.
Okay. Curtis moves. Julia seconds. Discussion. Julia.
So on the page four, I'm looking at, yes, the last section about the wireless communications tower. This, the first sentence ends with something about the tower would be on school property. I thought it was on property adjacent to the school.
The, the, the tower that's currently under conversation is, is adjacent to the school, Julia. If it says, they're going back like 2011, 2012, there was discussion of a, of a communications tower on campus, but you're correct, this, the one that is in conversation right now is adjacent to the campus.
So, so maybe if that could be amended to say, since the tower would be on property adjacent to the school. Okay. Thank you. Carrie?
Thanks, Christina. On page two, number four, student spotlight. The students' names are Jonah Hane, Hane, H-A-N-E, and Catherine with a C, McAllister, M-C-A. So it would be good to note that. And instead of saying two students, I think they were identified as two juniors. But that's less important.
Okay. Thank you. And then I wanted to make a clarification. Uh, let's see if I can find it now. My suggestion was not to include the full documents in the future minutes, but the references to the documents. Just wanted to make that clarification. Anything else? Okay, so we have a motion from Curtis seconded by Julia with some amendments, all in favor. Roll call vote alphabetically.
O-N-I.
Conry-I.
Constancy-Ni.
Elfen-Barn-I.
Green-I.
Mila-I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the May 21st, 2021 special session minutes?
So moved.
Julia moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Curtis seconds. Discussion. Julia.
Um, I wonder, I know we're going to talk later on the agenda about minutes format. But as I looked at these, I am, I'm always grateful when Steve includes I, the commentary that people have given. There's, I wonder, though, for these, if it should read, instead of what Steve read being embedded in the minutes, if it should read, "Steve read a prepared statement expressing his frustration with the process," some, something about what he read, and then including the full text as an attachment. As I read them, it felt like, because of the real estate of the minutes, that the vast majority of the meeting was that. And I, and I don't remember the meeting, you know, feeling that way. So I don't know if that's like a, I don't know, I don't know if that's an amendment that's an appropriate amendment, or.
Yeah, I don't know if that's something we want to bring into our later discussion, or as long as the general content is correct now in these minutes, I think it's okay to approve them and then bring, bring that discussion into the, the minutes discussion later in the meeting. Is everyone amenable to that? Okay. So we have a motion from Julia seconded by Curtis, all in favor.
Bo and I.
Conry-I.
Constancy-Ni.
Elfen-Barn-I.
Green-I.
Mila-I.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. So next up, we have principal updates. Jake, should I leave it to you to call on folks? Because I don't know if everyone's here.
Sure, I'll, I'll be happy to. I do believe we have Andrea Malone, who is good enough to present the, to talk about the Mount Greylock Regional School, School Improvement Plan. But before we, we hand over to Andrea, you know, we, we, this, this school year goes without saying, although we've said it 50 times even in my short time here, this has just been a school year unlike any other. So the school improvement plans did not ask the principals to bring fully formed, ready to go to the publisher plans here tonight, although I suspect we will see one or two that are maybe like that. But we did just want to take the opportunity, as this is the, the last meeting of, of this school year, to, to touch base on and get sort of a where are we with the school improvement planning process? So very grateful to the principals and to Andrea, the co-chair of the, of the school council at, at Mount Greylock for joining us tonight, and, but, but please do understand that this is, these are works in progress that we are looking at here this evening. So with, with that, with Andrea, if you would like to talk about the Mount Greylock Regional School Plan, that would be awesome. Thank you for doing this.
Sure, it's my pleasure. I know, I know Jake Schitt would love to be here, but he is chaperoning prom, so he's with Charlie. But I, I just want to thank you all very much. This, I feel like this year has been a tremendous year in terms of what you all have accomplished, and from the perspective of the school council, we've been listening in on all your meetings and feel like we've gotten all the kinds of strategic direction that we needed at district level from you guys, and we appreciate that very much. So we have, we're going to be presenting to you five goals for your consideration for next year for Mount Greylock. Two of the goals you have basically seen already fleshed out because in January, we presented to you a short budget implications presentation, and that went into some detail on our social emotional wellness, social emotional learning goal, which included the recommended hire of an additional social worker, which you all approved, and thank you very much for that. And also, our hopes for expanding our data analysis and acquisition capabilities for, for MGRS. We're not sure how that would be funded yet, and whether that's really a district question or whether it's just specific to our school, so we look forward to seeing how that might unfold in the next year. Goals three and four are carryovers from last year. One of them is academics. And that goal, you will see, we're going to spend a lot of time next year trying to figure out which pieces of remote learning that we saw worked well and that we might want to carry forward in the future, and also mining as much data as possible to figure out where holes are in academics and where improvements can be made. The second is diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. I think you will see in that goal a lot of building on what we presented last year, and also as much incorporation as possible of the district goals. So you will see some familiar language in there from last year's plan and also from what we've seen at the district level. And then the fifth one is the arts. This, there's been a lot of exploration done within the school council this year, looking at what the arts at Mount Greylock look like, and how we might improve upon leveraging the resources that we already have for the school, and if there are any other essential arts-related resources that are not available that we might recommend. So those are our five main goals. We have a final draft ready. We are meeting on Tuesday, and at that point, we will hopefully sign off on our final draft and then forward it on to Jake McCandless, who would then forward it on to you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much, Andrea. Thank you for doing this tonight, and thank you for your leadership on the school council. Nolan, would you like to go next from Lanesboro Elementary School, please?
Of course. Do, am I allowed to share my screen? Is that something that is permitted?
I believe that is permitted if Christina can, can share that, that right with you.
He should be outside.
So as I pull it up, I have three goals to share with you. First, I'd like to give a huge shout out to our school council. We've been working hard the past couple of months to flush out exactly what we want to focus on, and we narrowed it down to three things. The first being to create more access to social, emotional, and DEIB learning. And we're going to do that a couple of ways. The first thing we're going to do is we purchased a new benchmark system, which is called FastBridge, which has an SCL benchmark in it, which will allow us to gauge where the students are at and how this work is impacting them throughout the school year. Also, we are right in the middle of hiring a social worker to help implement some other cool things that we were doing, like in column C, which is each week, we will now have a community circle run by the social worker. It will start with some core curriculum, like anti-bullying, stuff like that, and as it progresses, we hope it, we hope it builds into relationships and talks about, you know, the, all the DEIB stuff that needs to happen in order for it to be a really welcoming school environment. And then lastly, we updated the referral process to account for mental health and how that impacts the students' education. So that is our first goal. Our second goal is to implement multi-tiered systems of support. So what that is, is teachers will use data to group students for about a six to eight week period, and they will be grouped and by what instruction they need to target the gaps they lost in the last school year or school years before that, to really help bridge the gaps that were created specifically last year. To make this happen, we'll have to continue with benchmarking. We'll do benchmarks in math and in ELA to see where the gaps are. But I think it's really important to note that we will not only be using this one plane of data, we'll be using student work and other pieces of data that we get through these time periods to make accurate decisions on how to group these students and to determine where the gaps are. We plan on having PD for the teachers to know how to use FastBridge, but also know how to look at data efficiently to find the gaps and to create groups of students. With that, we need an intervention block, which is, I'm in the process of planning for next school year. We have a cool new schedule next year, which is really going to be consistent across the board, which will really impact student learning. And then as we continue to work on this, reflect on it and see if it's working and what adjustments need to be made. Then our last goal, goal three is to develop community partnerships with a focus on sustainability. About four weeks ago, five weeks ago, we had a fourth grade group start a LES club. LES club is called the Lanesboro Environmental Squad, and they're all about being environmentally friendly, looking at what we can do within the school, and that kind of inspired this goal within our school council. So we're going to reach out to community partners to see what they have to offer to build a partnership about getting people in the building and doing field trips to see other places that are doing sustainable efforts. I know they're putting in, I believe they're putting in a solar field at Skyline, which is right down the road. Maybe that's a trip we take to talk about how it works, and, you know, it's a two-hour trip that we can make that, help impact these students and help them learn about sustainability. And the biggest part of the school is to give students the tool, the tools they need to implement sustainability within our school and then in the greater community. So I talked, I do have more I want to say about what's, you know, the end of the year. I'll pause now, and what questions do you have for me?
Any questions from the committee for Nolan?
Okay, so we're hearing none. I will move on to like what has happened, what is happening in the end of the year stuff. We finished the MCAS, which, you know, students work so hard on this test, and the teachers will ramp it up, and it's just great to have it done and over with. We also finished our kindergarten orientation and kindergarten screeners. I think we, right now, we have 21 projected kindergarteners coming in. Big things coming up tomorrow is Lual Day, so all the students will be wearing Hawaiian gear. We can't do the traditional Lanesboro Lual, which is a big, huge event that happens out front. We are celebrating the Lual Day by dressing up in Hawaiian gear, and we are still doing the town famous basket raffle. We have, I think, 13 to 15 baskets that are being raffled off. And that, the raffle will be held live tomorrow at 5:30 via Zoom. The link can be found in the Yvern Weekly email blast. The pre-K has a celebration day coming up. It's not really a celebration day. It's an art gallery. It's a really cool art gallery. Students made abstract self-portraits of themselves, like full-body huge self-portraits, like they laid on the ground and they did a chalk outline. And it's based on poems that they created, and these poems represent what's most important about themselves and what their peers find most important about them. So I think that's a really cool project. The kindergarten celebration day is a small, it's a bunch of small skits and songs that parents will attend. It's outside. It'll be about an hour on Tuesday. And then the big one, the crossover ceremony, the graduation. We have a whole week kind of planned out. We have SEAL Day on Monday, which is social, emotional, artistic learning. We have Miss Kick planned, about five events. We have a drum group coming in. We have a meditative breathing practitioner coming in to help, you know, focus on some of that social, emotional stuff. Then we have some small little group stuff, like, I'm trying to think of a good one. The one I'm doing is the Tale of Little Red Rudden, the Big Bad Wolf. Sorry, I grew up with fairy tales. Big Bad Wolf, and telling the, telling the story from the perspective of the Big Bad Wolf. We're going to do a collab pool events with that. Tuesday is the student celebration day. There's going to be a cookout, and that's all I'm allowed to talk about with that one. Really excited for the cookout. There might be a kickball game happening at the end of the day. And then lastly, 10:00 AM on Wednesday, the sixth graders take the plunge and go into Mount Greylock and their graduation ceremony. So what questions do you have?
Jose.
No, thanks so much, Nolan. That's me echoing, but I just want to preface this by saying literally sincerely, thank you for all the work that, that you've done and your team has done this year. I just had a question about, and I, and I'll ask this question from just the perspective of, of members of our community, both here and elsewhere, that, that may have some concern about Lual Day and whether that's, that event will incorporate any, you know, education or sharing of information of native Hawaiian culture, or at least putting, putting that day into some kind of context that, that could be educational for the kids. I think, and I'll just cut to the chase, I think the worry is, is that, you know, these celebrations are a misappropriation of native Hawaiian culture, but, but I'll leave it there.
We can definitely work towards that in the future. Might be a little late to, you know, have students, have teachers teach about it tomorrow. There was no plan to talk about it, but we can definitely maybe do a blurb in the morning about why we, you know, about the history of the Wells. Thank you. All right. I don't see any more questions.
If, if there are no more questions. Oh, Carrie, did you have your hand up? Okay, I, I will just say to Nolan before we, we hand, hand off to Cindy. I had the wonderful opportunity to, to talk with the leadership group from the Lanesboro Environmental Squad, and the, that is a powerful group of young people with lots of ideas. And we, we had a lunch together one day, and they are really thinking, they are looking to form partnerships with, with the high school. You know, I talked to them about a similar group that exists at Berkshire Community College and at some other neighboring high schools and middle schools. So, yeah, stay tuned for what that group of, of, of young power people bring to the table and the ideas that they generate. So thank you, Nolan. Cindy, would you like to talk about the Williamstown Elementary School Improvement Plan and end-of-the-year events?
Yes, thank you, Jake. Hello, everyone. Well, the worst part about always going last, as I feel like all I get to do is repeat a lot of stuff you've already heard. The good news about going last is you again get to hear that Nolan and I are really working collaboratively and trying to make our schools have partnerships and have our children have relationships long before they get to the high school. So that's the best. I do want to take a moment first to celebrate the humans in my building. We've survived eight and a half months. Eight and a half months of what many thought was impossible. Eight and a half months of changing all instructional models to various different things. Teachers trying to create curriculum and trying to disseminate information through a screen that they've never been done before. People who we know could have benefited from a year of professional development before they ever had to take this on. And I think I'd love for everybody to just take a moment and celebrate the people within the building because we have been able to accomplish the incredible. We've been able to, you know, have everybody be a team. Our building and grounds crew, our cafeteria staff, our substitutes, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our nurse, our office staff. I mean, look what we've done in eight and a half months. Look what we've been able to provide the children in our community. Look what we've been able to do with the families in our community. I mean, I know this has been a tremendous year. I know there will be a million things that we will all have hated about this year, but there's also a lot of really incredible things that we need to celebrate. Our children did what no one thought they could do. Our littlest kids in preschool and kindergarten learned through a screen, and they did learn. Our teachers, despite all different levels of technology skills, were able to instruct children through a screen. And our staff was able to navigate through a million different learning models with grace, with a lot of stress, but still with the ultimate goal that we want to be able to serve the children and the families in our community because that's what we're here for, and that's what matters. And I think, you know, when you see the people who work in the buildings, please thank them. Please give them a shout out because this has been incredible, and I will forever be proud of this year. I'm always going to be proud of what we accomplished, but I just think this year has been something that has really taught us incredible things. We are able to be a team. We are able to accomplish things that we thought were insurmountable, and I think that's important to definitely recognize to start this off. And as far.
Just take a moment and actually applaud all three schools for this accomplishment. Thank you, Cindy, for spelling it out like that, but everybody unmute. Let's hear the applause.
Thanks, Carrie. So going into our last couple of weeks of school, I mean, the first, the next thing after celebrating our staff, I have to be honest, I don't think that there are two more excited people that MCAS is over, other than Nolan and I. As this being our first year, I am pretty sure I'm on a first-name basis with the state and the MCAS Service Center. Anyone who tells you that MCAS is easy, sending it back for Nolan and I has been one of the most incredible feats I've experienced professionally to date and have taught for a really long time. So that's definitely saying something. and have taught for a really long time. So that's definitely saying something. We're proud of our kids for hanging in there. We're proud of the staff for hanging in there, but I know that the two of us feel like we have definitely had a massive accomplishment being able to mail off the no less than 10,000 boxes back to the state. So definitely something that we're proud of. We were able to have our kindergarten visitation day this week too. We of course picked the hottest day this week to have people come to our school. Inevitably, it always works that way. But I think what was amazing was, you know, I have 44 kindergarteners who are registered for next school year and to watch the front steps of our building fill up with children and their parents despite the oppressive heat. Everybody was excited to be there. The kids and the parents were riding the school bus and we know that can be a sauna in the middle of any sort of heat event and watching the kids faces be so excited to be part of our school community and looking forward to coming with something that I know as a first year principal is something that I will never forget. And I think being able to pull off a visitation that if you again had asked us eight and a half months ago, if we would have been able to do, I don't know that any of us on this screen would have said we would get here. And here we are with a rising crop of upcoming kindergarteners and their families who are supportive and excited to start to join our Williamstown Elementary School community. As we prepare for the last couple of days of school, we are incredibly focused on our sixth grade class. All of next week will really be focused on all of our sixth graders doing special events with them. They're going to have a day that again, I'm not giving a lot of details for because the kids don't know the details, but the teachers and I have been working on a day for them to be able to celebrate together, bring more of the fun back that they haven't been able to infuse throughout the school year and, you know, continue to work towards graduation. The kids are preparing, they're rehearsing, they're reading speeches and are equally as excited to get to graduation. For a number of reasons, they're excited to go to Mount Greilock, but also I think many of them are really excited that they'll always be able to say that they were the sixth grade class that graduated from elementary school in a pandemic. And in reading their graduation speeches, we will be recording that and I would love for all of you to really listen to those children's speeches and to listen to their words. We know that our kids' words are really powerful, but listening to different perspectives of what the pandemic did for our kids is pretty remarkable. And I'm proud of them. I'm proud of them for hanging in there. I know that they have a huge transition ahead of them, but I'm confident that our kids, if they can make it through learning in a pandemic, middle school should be a breeze. So I'm happy for them to get started on this next, you know, kind of chapter in their education. And as we finish up next week, we will be preparing for the launch of our new ELA curriculum that we're bringing to both of our elementary schools. So our teaching staff will participate in an all-day professional development on the 18th. As well as at the end of the day, we will be celebrating the staff and our retirees. We're also gearing up for our summer programming that we will be having this summer. It's a little bit of uncharted territory for us. We have always done, you know, some programming, but this year we're trying to really test the waters on what kind of programming can we offer to support all of our students? And it will be an incredibly reflective time for us to be able to look back and see what worked, what didn't work, and what could we do going forward to make sure that we're offering program, programming to continue to do targeted instruction to make sure that our students are all, you know, maintaining and also continuing to grow in their skills. I think when we come back in the fall as well, you know, it will be incredibly crucial for us to take a look at where all of our students' learning needs are. And again, I'm working with the best people possible and I'm excited for our teachers, our paraprofessionals and all of our support staff to be able to come back to school and hit the ground running and really meet the kids where they are because that's what we do best and that's the area where we shine. I know people are worried about it. I'm pretty excited about it. Incredible things happen and this staff is going to make this next year incredible for our students. As far as our school improvement plan, I can share my screen if you would like me to, totally up to you. In developing the school improvement plan, there were many things that, you know, as I'm trying to figure out what's going to be great for our school, what are the things that I really want to be focused on? And, you know, I had two paths. I could write a lot of goals and come up with 100 different things that I would like to achieve next year as any teacher or administrator could possibly do, or I could choose the path of picking things that I feel like are the most valuable. The things that will affect the most people and impact change that's positive within not only the walls of our school, but in that partnership with our greater community and our families. Give me just a second and I'll share. Okay, so as you're looking at this, the three goals, the first one, very important to me across the board, I think just as a human, this, the goal of creating a respectful, inclusive school environment. And part of me, I know this is an incredibly broad goal, but for me, I wanted it to be broad. Some of what we're trying to do is yes, we are trying to focus on diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. And we keep saying those words, but for our elementary school, how are we going to do that? And what are we actually going to do to achieve a school that is focused in those practices? And for me, you know, we can put all the curriculum in place or books or all of those types of things, but at the heart of it is continuing to provide professional development for our staff. We have to be able to provide our staff with resources, with dialogue, with materials to be able to have them, help them generate conversations with our students. And it starts with our staff. It starts with being able to provide them with the things that they need in order to instruct the children who are in front of them. To that end, we are always looking at our curriculum, but I do really think that we are looking at our curriculum with a really careful lens. We're trying to understand, are we representing material accurately to our students that is representative of all people everywhere? And that's something as educators, as people who are consistently professionally developing themselves, that we should always be doing. But it's something across the board I would like to see us as a staff be looking at from pre-K through sixth grade. The next one is reviewing and expanding literature representing diverse people. I spoke about this a little bit before, but this piece for me is really being able, I've written a grant trying to get literature within our building and the goal again is being able to get 150 titles that represent those principles of diversity, equity and inclusion and belonging to get them in the hands of our children. We can't talk about it, but not have resources for our children. So being able to get a diverse set of books within the library, but also carefully curated books at pre-K through six so that within each grade level, there are books for our teachers to be teaching from. There are books that will be able to have prompts and, you know, different questions to help our students have the dialogue that it requires to start to get our children to really, you know, think outside the box and to be able to think deeply and carefully about who they are as people, but also who the world around them is. And to that end, yes, we're talking a lot about diversity, equity and inclusion and belonging. And that belonging piece for me really hits home coming out of this pandemic year. I really feel like we have a lot of growth that we're going to be doing, trying to rebuild that sense of community just within our staff, within our students and within our families. And one of the ways that I'd like to see us do that at Williamstown is to really kind of define, develop, broaden our PTO, expand our membership, really start to focus more on how can we get more members of our community and our teaching staff to be part of that, to be able to start to have different events for our students where it's not one small group, but instead it's many voices and it's all of us really working together to build experiences for our staff, for our students and for our families. Lastly, developing roles and expanding members on the school council. The school council is still pretty new to me. But my understanding of it in comparison to the other two schools within the district is I find that at my school, not many people know that we have one as far as internally. And a lot of the people who are on my school council have served for multiple years because there was not the ability to get new members. And so part of that for me going forward will require me to really provide the education around what school council is, but also be able to solicit feedback and trying to have, try to have a more robust school council so that when it comes to a time to develop a school improvement plan, it's many voices, it's more collaboration, you know, again, focusing on getting as many people as we can to work together for the good of our kids. The engaging paraprofessionals and recess strategies. We will be having a company called Playworks come in August. The company is really going to work with our paraprofessional staff who are outside at recess with our students to be able to give them tools and strategies in collaboration with our PE teacher to talk about how do we help our kids play? How, what games can we do? How do we help our kids build those relationships that we talk about all the time outside of the classroom? Goal number two, curriculum and assessment. I've talked about this before. We are really launching this new language arts curriculum and anybody who tells you we can launch it and be done has never taught a day in their life. And if you notice, I have the timeline of, you know, three years. I'm hoping it's three years. Three years feels safe. But one of the things about being able to do this and do it well is not only to have a really effective rollout initially, but it's also that ongoing support. We cannot provide our staff with, here are the books and here's how you teach it. Good luck. The biggest piece of this is being able to have not only our teachers support each other, but allowing time for our teachers to have the dialogue around new curriculum. Share the lessons, what's going well. And that time piece, we never have enough of it, but we've got to be able to do it in this next school year and for the next two to three years to make this program what it really is intended to be, which is a language arts program that's rooted in the components of reading instruction to meet all learners' needs and do that with authentic text where you're not focused so much on reading a script. And that's incredibly valuable. Nolan talked a little bit about doing a new online assessment tool called FastBridge. He and I have talked a lot about the different assessment tools that we utilize at our school. You're always looking for an assessment tool that is going to give you valuable information and data to drive instruction. Yes, it is one piece of data, but it's still, we want that piece of data to be something that's useful to our staff, useful to he and I as the administrators within the building, but also useful as a whole so that we can take a look at what are our kids doing well and what areas do we need to improve on? And what we've been able to experience so far in, you know, kind of brief engagements with FastBridge and learning about it. He and I have been really pleased to, you know, try something different and we've been pleased with what the data shows that we could possibly be able to use with this new program. Part of it as well as there's an SEL component of FastBridge to support students that we've never had before. So we're kind of anxious to learn more about it and we're anxious to really learn along with our staff. One of the best, one of the best things about FastBridge with professional development is all of their professional development is our recorded sessions. So they are within the system. If teachers forgot about something or if teachers aren't sure how to do something, those professional development videos will live consistently in the system for the duration that we're using FastBridge. And as we all know, I mean, I don't know how many trainings you've sat through, but I've sat through a million where you're ready to go and you leave and the next day you can't remember those three things that the presenter said. So the value of being able to be reflective and have those professional development videos at your fingertips is pretty invaluable. And the last one, technology. This is something I feel like I would be remiss if after the year that we've had that I didn't revisit technology. One of the biggest things that we've learned is trying to plan for the expansion at the kindergarten level. We are a school that is incredibly fortunate. We are incredibly lucky with the tools that we have in regards to technology. But from the pandemic, one of the things that really was highlighted was whether or not we have the expansion of technology at the kindergarten level. And that's something our kindergarten teachers are really looking for. Being able to provide their students with a different medium to learn. And I'd love to be able to start to examine that for this next school year to see what we could possibly, you know, in the future put in place. The last two, I think it's incredibly important that we continue to provide training for our families. Technology is going to be a part of our life. We've learned a lot. We've grown a lot, but it's something I think I feel strongly we need to continue to support our families with. It only helps our students and it only makes the connection between home and school greater. And then the last one there, or the middle one, I should say. I'm really focused on trying to do collaborative partnerships within the community that are going to give our students, especially at fifth and sixth grade, education behind how to use social media. What about bullying? What about cyberbullying? What about online gaming? What I have learned in my very short three and a half months as principal is that our children are going to do a million different things, but part of our job is being able to provide the education and being able to show them what different social media presence looks like. What does different forms of technology look like? So that when they go to the middle school and the high school where there's, you know, more kids are getting cell phones or more kids are exposed to things, that we've at least done a good job foundationally at the elementary school before we send them along. There's a lot of things I could have added to this, to the school improvement plan, but I feel really strongly that I want to be able to pick things that are important to Williamstown Elementary that I feel like will make a huge impact on everyone within the building. So I'm hopeful that, you know, as we go into this new school year, I'm hoping the year looks a lot more normal, quote unquote. But I also feel like the goals within the school improvement plan speak to the people who are in the building and speak to what we need as a community. Questions?
Julia?
Thank you Cindy. That was also a great report. My question is, I'm not sure it's actually to Nolan, Cindy and Andrea, or if it's to Jake and Joel and the team at the district level. When I look, all the school improvement plans have a laudable goals, important goals. And the activities and the activities have measurable outcomes, which are indicators that that activity has happened, which is fantastic. But the connection between are those the right activities to achieve that goal, which would be determined by a measurement for the goal itself feels like it is missing. And that's, so that's not really about what Cindy and Nolan and Andrea have presented per se, but I wonder how we as a district can support the measurement of the ultimate goal.
Yeah, Julia, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leap in on this one and say, you know, we, we have those same conversations. And then, you know, you all and I will have that conversation around the superintendent goals for the 2021 school year and the district goals. You know, we are, we are working with Ben Klaupas later on this summer and doing some work on going through the year. Just trying to evolve to the point where really everything we're doing is, is A aligned and the gears are enmeshing, all of the gears are enmeshing together. And B, where not only the, the activities that flesh out the goal are measurable, but that the goal, the large goal itself is measurable. I don't think we're there, but we are working to be there. And that's a, that's a, that's a great observation and one that we discuss.
Thank you.
Carrie? My question is also for Jake. Wondering, going back to the remarks that Charlie made at the beginning, I'm wondering in the context of the pandemic, whether there has been any discussion amongst the superintendents and perhaps within the district as well with the principals about flipping the schedule.
Yeah, personally, that, that feels to me like after, after working on that as the superintendent of Lee and then of Pittsfield and now coming to Mount Greilock, that feels like the third rail that everybody, everybody knows we should do it. And very few district schools people have done it. I don't, there's been no countywide conversation about that. I think with, with Charlie's plea to us on his way on to his next chapter. I do think it is worth, whether it's via the school council or some other body, it is worth taking a look at is there something we could do within our two communities that could make that work and make that possible? So, so no, not conversation about that up to this point. As far as I know, either here locally nor on a, on a more regional I, as far as I know, either here locally nor on a, on a more regional basis. But that is not to say that we could not. Continue to, to chip away at that because all of the science suggests it's the right thing to do. It's a matter of having the, the logistics and the plan catch up with what the research tells us is, is better and healthier for kids and. You know, the, the conclusions I have reached every time I've gone down this pathway, which is several times. Is that the, the simple flipping of the elementary and the middle and high school schedule. Does not tend to be an adequate solution for the community and the clients that we serve. Unless. There are some other things put into that mix and some of those other things could be. Greater of the, greater availability of free before school, after school care. You know, particularly for elementary schools. So I, there are some ways to do this, but, but, but we're not there at the cusp of, of how to do it or being ready to do it.
Okay, any other questions before we move on to our next agenda item? Okay, so next up on our agenda is the policy subcommittee update. And I am going to turn this over to the chair of that subcommittee, who is Jose.
I think Christina, do we have the report on the tiered focus monitoring review?
Yeah, you know, it's in the.
Am I working off a different?
It's the next thing on the agenda.
Yeah, sorry, I skipped over it. My bad.
Thank you, and I, and I'm happy to introduce this one and I apologize, Jose, for, for. But pushing off your time a little bit, but as all of you know, we, we did undergo a, a tiered focus monitoring review this year, which is a. I think if I were talking about this or, or the equivalent of this 10 or 15 years ago, earlier in my superintendent career. I, I would be using words like audit and like jumping through hoops. That, that DUCI put in front of us, speaking about it here in 2021. And, and, and I would say going back even four or five years. I, to me, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed has really evolved and worked hard to become. Less a monitoring agency and more a genuine partner in helping districts understand. What their strengths are, where their challenges are and, and then working to develop. Programs and systems for helping us address our weaknesses and our challenges. And I, I know that Pat would agree that the folks that happened to run this. This particular process, this TFM this time around. You know, and I'll just name Elena Podmore from DUCI. Were, were, were really wanting to help us understand ourselves so that we could. Better serve students and better serve families. And so I'd like to thank DUCI for this opportunity. And I say that with 100% genuineness. And I also say with 100% genuineness, thank you to, to Patrick Priest or, or interim Director of People Services. This is a. This was a big lift for somebody that has been doing this job for three years or five years or eight years. And for Patrick to transition into this position. And to, to help facilitate us through this is simply. It, it was a wonderful piece of work, Patrick. And so very publicly, I say thank you to you. And I would certainly be remiss not to thank Suzie Gelati as well, who is, who is, you know, equally. Equally shares the credit for helping to get this organized, helping to make sure everything ran smoothly, making sure everything was ready. For when DUCI came on site to look at this. And then finally, a thank you to the, to the parents, to the teachers, to the staff, to the families who engaged with this process. So that we could, could learn more about ourselves, about how to better serve our community. So. Patrick, with tremendous thanks and congratulations, hand over to you to, to talk us through this a little bit, if you would.
Thank you Jake, and thank you everyone for having me present our findings. Can I share my screen? Okay. All right, can everybody see this? All right, so as part of our TFM, this go around, we were in the group A universal standards. And part of that, DUCI looked at student identification, our IEP processes, our individual education program development. Our programming and support services as well as people opportunities as part of our civil rights review. The self-assessment phase consisted of our district reviewing special education and civil rights documentation for required elements, including. Uploading the documents to the portal. We also reviewed sample special education student records and selected across grade levels, disability categories and levels of need. Upon completion of those two internal reviews, we submitted our self-assessment to the department. That was supposed to be due again last spring. It didn't happen until the fall because of the closures, but we got those in. And the second phase of this was an onsite verification review. So an onsite team came out and conducted a review. Using their standard department procedures and determine whether procedural and programmatic requirements are being met. Included a review of student records for special education. Those records included ones that we submitted and ones they selected. Some of those were surprises, so it was good that they were able to look at those and let us know, you know, the ones we weren't able to prepare beforehand. So. And those came out pretty good too, so. And included a survey of parents with this, of students with disabilities. Interviews of staff consistent with those criteria selected for the onsite verification. As well as interviews of members of our parental advisory council, our PAC representatives and other telephone interviews as requested by other parents. Parents and members of the general public. Some of the information that was reviewed is called, they're called indicators, indicators 11, 12 and 13. I spent the better part of my first year in the district working on these. And I'll gladly say that I had them submitted before we went out on closure and I'm glad we did that. Indicator 11 looked at evaluation timelines. So when we get requests for evaluations. We have certain amount of timeline, we got to get those out, we get them processed. Indicator 12 looks at our early childhood transition. So the kids that are turning three, coming up from our early childhood programs in the, in the communities. And referrals that come from them. And then. Indicator 13, which is secondary transition. So they look at transition for kids after high school or post-graduation. And it was a great pleasure to announce that Mount Greylock Regional had no findings and then no corrective actions that needed to be taken regarding this review. Per this review, we are full compliance as our special education and civil rights standards were determined to be fully implemented. And in three years, we'll be reviewed again for group B standards that include special education and it's more bent towards civil rights for the group B procedures. So that's pretty much my review. Does anyone have any questions regarding this process? Yeah, Julia.
So it's not, it's not really a question, but I just wanted to maybe reiterate what Jake said and therefore underscore the. I gratitude to Patrick and Suzie and all of the team because. I know Jake said it used to be more of an audit. There still is a huge audit component to this. Where there's a lot of details to manage, but not only that, everything behind the details and the work has to be strong. So I'm, I'm just so impressed, Patrick, with these results and, and appreciative of, of the work that you and your team are doing.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. And I'd love to reiterate. Special gratitude and thanks go out to Suzie Gelati for all the help and support she's given me. In my introduction and my first couple of years in the district, especially through a pandemic and through a TFM process and any other processes we had to go through this year, so. But thank you and with great gratitude, we, we accept your, your. Your thank you, so. Anyone else?
Yes. Having just trouble getting my hand up.
Oh, Steve?
Yes, so I just want to repeat what everyone said. I can't imagine how challenging it is this year, you know, all that's going to begin with. And just wanted to, you know, again, express my appreciation for all the stuff that was being done. I was wondering if you could help put what's going on in context of previous years to help you get a sense of where we might be next year? I don't know if this is a fair question to ask now.
In our previous reviews, because I looked at that data. The most recent one that looked at these standards, we were found in full compliance with those two. Our district has, the process is in place, our staff are very, are veteran staff, so they know what to do. And it's just the job of our office to make sure it really gets done. The timelines are met and we do everything that we need to do. That's kind of what the TFM process comes and reiterates.
I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense of, and again, if this is not an appropriate question to ask now, please just let me know. Are we seeing more cases than previous years? Are we seeing more, you know, students in trouble? And just trying to get a sense of what that might mean for resources that we might need to allocate in future years, you know? So for example, how many cases went to DUCI for resolution this year? How does that compare to last year, the year before?
Um. I. It's hard for me to say because I wasn't here for previous, you know, resolution cases. The ones that we had were, this past year were included in the TFM assessment. They looked at that information and we were able to resolve many of those PRS complaints.
Okay, and then, you know, one of the reasons I want to ask this question is just so that you have people who are listening at home or people who are, you know, reading the write-ups for this meeting know. You know, how are the available services being communicated to members of the community? How do parents know what to ask for and what services are available?
We do that through the team process. We meet with, with individual, you know, families and talk about their student and the services we can provide. One of my long-term goals is to get that information out more public. I just participated in Leadership Academy and one of my projects that I would like to do is to put our referral process on the website, get that information out to the public. Also explain that we have an ongoing child study process, which, you know, I think it was Nolan that referred to as part of the MTSS, the most institute in the school. We do have these processes in place. It's just we recently combined into one district, so I'd like to standardize these across the three schools. And make sure that we have common forms, common language and common processes. So, but basically we do that through the team process.
Right, and yeah, I, I've experienced, you know, similar communication issues in my job. And just, you know, if somebody had a question, what's the best contact that they should use? You know, where should they start asking?
They can contact our office or the principal and the principal can usually refer a concern to us. And we start that process there. We also have the child study process in both three schools. They do have a different name, so I think Williamson is called the. Teacher Assistance Team in Lanesboro. It's the Child Study Team and at the high school, it's the Student Support Team. But basically, they, they function pretty much the same. If there's an issue. A teacher will put in a referral, the team will meet and discuss the needs or, or the concerns that the staff has regarding the student. It's an ongoing process. And from there, we'll, you know, refer out either for special education or for other services that may be necessary for that student.
Thanks. And then just one last question, just for the people at home. Is it too late if somebody is thinking about additional summer? Resources for their child for summer programs?
No, they could reach out to our office and express those concerns. We do have a process of identifying students. For our ESY or, or special ed programs that would run in the summer. This summer, like we touched upon earlier, it's a little different because we are running agenda or enrichment programs. So it was finding that middle ground for some of our kids that are more inclusive. Which program would be, would be more beneficial to them? An enrichment program or our ESY services? And some students have a foot in both of those programs this summer. Some students are strictly there for ESY services. Some students are there for the enrichment programs. But we, we, they can reach out to us and let us know the concerns and we can discuss that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Patrick? Sorry for skipping over you, Patrick. This is the problem when your printer breaks and you're using your electronic devices instead of your nice handwritten, I can follow along on the page.
Well, we've had to move over a lot of technical difficulties this year, trust me, so.
Okay, so now we're moving to the policy subcommittee update, which Jose will be leading. Sorry, Jose.
No worries at all. Thanks Christina. Thanks Patrick and thanks, thanks Jake. The policy subcommittee met on Wednesday of last week and you can see on the agenda, we've got five items that. We will be discussing. First, we're, we're being asked to vote on an amendment to the face coverings policy. We have three first reads that we'll go through with the full committee and. And we'll be looking for, for feedback from the full committee. And then finally, we. Have a recommendation as a, as a subcommittee for a, a future retreat that we, we'd like to propose to everyone. So on the first policy subcommittee agenda item, what I'd like to ask is for Joe to. Give us an update on the proposed amended language that we see in our packet for face coverings, if that's okay, Joe?
Sure, absolutely. So you all have the proposed face coverings policy in your packet. It is mostly identical to what you reviewed a couple of weeks ago. Although a couple of weeks within DUCI's time right now for updating its mask guidance is, is perhaps a week or two too long. So DUCI has since we last met updated its guidance again specifically around adults. Its updated guidance reads. Effective May 29th, 2021, fully vaccinated educators do not have to wear masks when outdoors. And unvaccinated educators are encouraged to wear masks when outdoors in alignment with the state masking advisory. That updated guidance led to us discussing whether or not it was prudent for us to attempt to. Ask for an update from you as a school committee on the face covering policy around the. Treatment of adults within this policy. And so if you scroll down to what is the third. Page of the PDF. The bullet that reads for, that starts with for adults. The updated language that we're proposing reads for adults. Fully vaccinated adults are not required to wear masks outdoors. Unvaccinated adults are encouraged to wear masks outdoors if appropriate distancing of six feet cannot be maintained. So this is trying to align with the state's guidance while more fully detailing what, what distancing is. So we used our standard distancing language there. So that's part one of the change since you last read this. The other part is down at the base of the policy. And we've seen other districts utilize language like this. And I realize that we only have. A few more weeks that this is really impactful for us, but, but we do have the summer coming up. Where our policies are still in effect and we will have students and staff working together all summer or for much of the summer. We are proposing that you accept language that reads, instead of this policy will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee. We're suggesting language that reads, the superintendent has the authority to amend this policy following Massachusetts State Guidance. Guidance from the Department of Health, DUCI or other governing authorities. The superintendent shall notify the school committee of such amendments that are made under such authority. So those are the two modifications that we're proposing since you last read it and tentatively authorized it a couple of weeks ago. Was that everything that you needed, Jose?
Yeah, thanks Joe. Any questions for, for Joe?
Should we make a motion to approve the policy so then we can further?
For discussion? Yeah, thanks Christina. That, that, yes. Do I have a motion to approve the suggested amendments to the policy? And do I have a second?
I'll second. Would these, if these were brought forth by the subcommittee, do we need to go through this?
They, they were, that's a great question, Steve. The, the subcommittee did not have an opportunity to review these amendments and so we, we never. The, the subcommittee did not have an opportunity to review these amendments and so we, we never passed a motion to, to forward this to this, to the full committee. Any questions for Joe or, or points for discussion that folks would like to raise? Christina, I mean Carrie, sorry.
So my question is for, well, Jake Schutz isn't here, but given that graduation is coming up, if we pass this tonight, is that going to alter the protocols for graduation or other senior week activities?
Carrie, Jake and I had this conversation and of course, as soon as we, you know, get this guidance from DSE, we immediately make sure Jake and Colin have it. This, this, it doesn't substantively change what, what their plans are or how graduation is going to work. It, it, it does hypothetically allow for a little bit more. You know, I, I suspect that we will see few to no face masks as graduation is, you know, face coverings as graduation is outside and it just gives a little more flexibility to really everybody that is, that is on grounds for athletic events, which hypothetically can run through July 3rd. And for events like graduation, for events like the crossover slash graduation ceremonies that are outdoors at Williamstown Elementary and Lanesboro Elementary. But it doesn't substantively change how things will actually work.
So it doesn't mean that more people can attend, for instance?
I don't know that there is a limit for the high school graduation. I will have that conversation with both of the elementary principals prior to their end of year exercises for their sixth grade. Just to make sure that the spaces that they're using and the plans that they have. You know, we, we really need to, and you understand this better than most, I think. We, you know, you, you can't completely upend the plans that have been being developed for weeks and weeks. But I will, I will do a little deeper dive with the elementary folks, but the, the high school, I don't think there's really any substantive change.
Any other questions or points that anyone would like to raise? If not, I believe we can we're ready for a roll call vote in alphabetical order to approve the amendments to the face coverings policy.
Bowen, I.
Henry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, bye, I.
Green.
Bella, I.
So I believe the, I believe the amendments have, have been passed as presented to us, or at least been approved by the, by the full committee.
Good job, Jose.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you so much. I always, I, I always often look at, in Carrie's direction because I worry that I test her patience when I do this job. She looks, but it's true. All right, so I'm looking at Curtis here. So Curtis, I didn't know how this process works, so I will just, just lay it out for you and I. This will be helpful for me to reiterate this. But the policy subcommittee will be presenting three first reads to policy amendments that the subcommittee is considering. We will be looking for feedback from the full committee and we will be taking that feedback into consideration in a, for a following subcommittee meeting where we will consider those, well, at least consider amendments or, or prepare ourselves to present amendments to the full committee for, for vote. Did I get that right, Carrie? This is where I look to you, Carrie, to make sure I got the language right.
Yeah, that's right. It also gives the public an opportunity to review the changes and present feedback to the administration or the school committee. Prior to a vote on the final policy.
Thanks Carrie. And thanks Julia, who I also probably test, test Julia's patience too. But on that note, I, I did joke that I was going to ask Julia or Carrie to, to read the longest of these policy amendments. But I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that for us. So the first on our agenda is the policy BEDB agenda format first read. And what I'd like to do is, and I think what's required of us is to fully read out the agenda format policy in this case. And then open it up for discussion. Is that correct? I believe so. Well, on that note, I don't know if it's worthwhile for me to share my screen. Would that be helpful, you think?
Sure.
Okay.
I can help you do that.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, I think we all can see the policy amendments and the, in the, the policy as, as we are about to read, the BEDB agenda format. The superintendent conferring with the chair of the school committee will arrange the order of items on meetings agendas so that the committee can accomplish its business as expeditiously as possible. The particular order may vary from meeting to meeting in keeping with the business at hand. The committee will follow the order of business established by the agenda, except as it votes to rearrange the order for the convenience of visitors, individuals appearing before the committee, or to expedite committee business. Items of business not on the agenda may not be discussed. Any school committee member, staff member or citizen may suggest items of business. A school committee member may submit their request to the chair of the committee. The inclusion of such items, however, will be at the discretion of the chair of the committee. Alternatively, a school committee member may utilize a standing agenda request agenda item during a meeting to request an agenda item for a future meeting. A staff member who wishes to have a topic scheduled on the agenda should submit the request to the superintendent. A citizen who wishes to have a topic scheduled on the agenda should submit the request through the chair of the, of the committee. The inclusion of items suggested by a staff member or citizen are also at the discretion of the chair of the committee. All agendas will include clear indications of all items that will be discussed and note if an item will receive a vote. Regular meeting agendas of the full school committee will include public comment and other items for discussion not reasonably anticipated by the chair 48 hours before the meeting item. Note, this item shall not be used for action items or topics that may be controversial or of particular interest to the public. The Attorney General strongly encourages public bodies to postpone such discussions to the next scheduled meeting agenda. An agenda request item. The agenda, together with supporting materials, will be distributed to school committee members no less than 48 hours prior to the meeting to permit adequate time to prepare for the meeting. I'll stop my share because I believe we all have this within our packet. And, and I, and I, the, the policy subcommittee would welcome feedback from our fellow school committee members. Anyone have questions? Yeah, Steve?
I, I like the idea of having a lot of items as just standard default on the agendas. This protects us, especially in the COVID era when things can happen quickly. And I like the explanation that the 48 hours is supposed to be used truly for things that arise with little warning. It is not meant to circumvent, you know, deliberative process. It's not meant to avoid having the discussions we should be having in public. So I, I think these are really good additions and I strongly support them. I, I like the ability to discuss agenda requests for future meetings. It's can you talk a little bit more about how that would work? Because you can't tell people in advance what you're going to want to discuss. And so for the request.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, Stephen. And my fellow subcommittee members can, can certainly fill in, but if I understand your question correctly, I think it's regarding the, the statement where alternatively, a school committee member may utilize a standing agenda request agenda item. Is that, is that the line that you are?
I, I can tell you how I'm interpreting it. I'm interpreting it as there's a standard item on all agendas for future meetings for agenda requests where someone can just bring up, I would like at the next school committee meeting for us to discuss whether or not we should serve purple punch at lunch, you know, something like that. And go into the merits as to why you think the punch should only be purple, but just, this is something I would like to discuss.
Right. So I, I, that's a great, a, a great question. Again, I'll, my, my fellow subcommittee members can, can fill in and incorrect if I get this, get this wrong. But I believe this, this line that we have, I'm sorry, am I interrupting someone? Oh, apologies. This line that we have here was in response, well, a, an attempt to address a hypothetical scenario where a school committee member asks of the chair to have an item placed on the agenda for a, you know, for, for an upcoming school committee meeting. Hypothetically, if the chair doesn't grant that request, this gives a school committee member a chance to make that request in front of the full committee. The full committee then can consider that request, can vote on that request. And if the full committee agrees that that should become an agenda item, then that agenda will appear as an item on a, on the following or a following school committee meeting, if that makes sense. So we wouldn't just.
I think that, I think that went a little further than what the policy says. There's no vote, right? So there's no vote on an agenda, a request, at least as the policy states now. The agenda is still within the full control of the chair, but there can be discussion by the committee as to the merits of an agenda request that can then be heard. You know, by the committee. So you're not discussing the item, you're discussing the merits of requesting the item for a future agenda.
Okay. And then, so Stephen, so maybe the question I have for, for, for you is, is, you know, in this, in this hypothetical scenario, does that, you know, well, what, what's your response to, to hearing Carrie's and to hearing, you know, what's literally written on the page right now in terms of, in terms of this, this policy amendment?
So I mean, the, the way I look at it is, you know, we're, we're all in this together. We're all working to try to make the district as strong as possible. And I trust my fellow committee members, the chair is the servant of the committee. I trust that if there is a public discussion and there is strong support for a agenda item, I would trust that the chair would add it. And I, I don't think we need to necessarily have your formal vote. What I greatly prefer to do is rather than put in a structure with detailed restrictions on what has to be done, let's just try something, see if it works. And if it works, that's wonderful. And then there's no need to be more formal. And I think if we just have a discussion and you can see that two or three committee members feel strongly that something is worth discussing, then I, I would, you know, trust that whoever is chair would take that strongly under advisement in setting the agenda. And I'm happy to leave it like that. I was wondering in a related.
Hi, Stephen, let me just interrupt you just, I just want to make sure I, I think what I heard you say, and I just wanted to make sure that this is what you were, you were communicating, is that the line, as you've read it and as Carrie explained it and corrected my, my misinterpretation of it. You, you're happy with that line as it, as it reads right now?
Right. Is that, right now, we're not having any formal votes to add anything to the agenda. We're just having a discussion. And whoever happens to be chair, you're, if you have your four people, three people who strongly support something, you know, I'm happy to trust that the chair would add it. If it turns out that we're in a situation where you know, five people are consistently requesting something and it's not added, then you revisit the policy, but I don't think there's any need to put in a real formal structure like that. No, I think a discussion is fine. There was something else I was going to add maybe as commentary to this. So that there's no surprises. If there's going to be an agenda request, should the person who's requesting it submitted to the chair 48 hours in advance? So that other committee members know what's coming.
I'd, I'd love to hear from, from Carrie and Julia in terms of their response to this question. If they still wish to.
That wasn't something that we talked about. I, I actually brought this up in a broader context as well that other committees that I've served on, you know, previous iterations of school committees, there has been a standing item, which is for agenda requests. And it's often used if something comes up during the meeting. And it seems like it would be good for a more lengthy discussion at a future time. You can make an agenda request at the end of the meeting and that's usually where I've seen agenda requests happen, right? So at the end of the meeting, you can say, you know, is it, would it be possible for us to go back to, you know, this topic that we talked about briefly at a future meeting, you know, preferably in the near future or it could be six months out, you know? So it's a way to keep track of things that are worthy of conversation, but maybe not just in that moment. So that's another way to think about this item. So in that sense, no, you wouldn't have it in advance. But in the other sense where the, the way it's spelled out, if, if you're using it as an alternative to a, perhaps a failed request by an email, then no, you wouldn't necess, I mean, you could submit it in advance as part of an agenda item, though, or how would you do that?
You, you can't deliberate it, but you could let people know, I think we should have a discussion in a future meeting on topic X. And in this way, when people go to the meeting, they could have spent a little time thinking, do I believe that this is an item the school committee should be discussing? You're just trying to minimize surprises. And again, there's a difference to be done and what's a good policy. I think if you.
Right. I suppose if you submit it, sorry, I'm just sort of thinking out loud. You could submit it to the secretary of the district, right? And for inclusion in the packet.
Right.
You know, for that specific agenda item.
Right.
But then you're submitting it after, well, yeah, I don't know. It's worth discussing. That's a really interesting point.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Stephen, I think that's a, oh, sorry, Julia, go ahead.
I, my, I think it's an interesting point. And I don't, I, I almost want to go back to what you said, Stephen, earlier. Like, let's, let's assume it's not an issue. And if it becomes an issue, then try to address it.
Oh, sorry. I, I wasn't saying to put that language in. I'm just saying almost like the Federalist Papers, the commentary.
Yeah.
Would it be useful if somebody knows that they're going to be making a request to submit it beforehand? Again, we try to operate under the no surprises. Because we can't discuss the merits of the request. We can only discuss if we want to discuss.
My, I think this is, this will be great for us to, this, the policy subcommittee to, to, to explore in some detail. You know, I think my initial reaction, I could see that being, being just fine as well as the, the surprise for, for agenda request items, you know, for, for, for when someone, you know, hasn't.
The one, one, one possibility is that, you know, if, if a member requests of the chair that they want all water coming out of the water fountains to be bubble gum flavored, and they want this discussed at the meeting. And the chair says, no, that's not relevant to the work of the school committee. And that member could then say, well, I would like to submit this as an agenda request for discussion under that item.
Right.
And then would the chair be obligated to include it as an agenda request? I don't think the chair is obligated. If it's not in the packet, that member can still bring it up.
Right.
But, but that would be one way to do it.
Right. Right.
And Stephen, in your reading of the policy amendments as they as they've been presented to you, do you, would you like to see some language that clarifies this possibility? Or this, yeah, for committee members to submit an agenda request item? Is that something that you'd like to see in this?
I guess I'd like to see that almost as a commentary, not as part of the formal language. Is that, you know, I think I can, I think we can all trust each other not to abuse this. And just some general guidelines as to what was the intent when we created this. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to discuss this right now. Because it's often hard years later to remember now, why was this done? When no one is on the committee who was on when that was originally done. When I was in grad school, it turns out that we had a packing fee to pay for paving that happened in the 1960s, which was supposed to have been stopped as soon as that was paid off, which just, somebody found this by going through the old minutes.
Thanks, Stephen. Any other comments? I'm sorry, Stephen, you have others, sorry.
Yeah, I had, I had one other comment going back to an older policy of the school committee that I have brought up in the past. It's extremely difficult, and for good reason, to discuss things outside of school committee meetings because of open meeting law requests. You know, if you're on a subcommittee of three, you can't talk to anyone. For a committee of seven, if you talk to three people, that's the max, and you can't have any email chains going more. So if you look at the policy we used to have, you used to be able to have it, an item added to the agenda if two school committee members supported it. And it used to be the policy of the committee before regionalization where that was done. And I was wondering if the policy committee looked at restoring that.
So we did talk about that, and we were trying to remember why it was removed. And as I recall, it was on the advice of the person from the MASC that we were working with in our policy review because of the risk of the violation of the open meeting law, which you just talked about, right? So if two members, if if a member wants an item on the agenda and they go to one other member and that member says no, and then they go to another member and that member says yes, but then that member talks to the second member, you've already violated the open meeting law because you have a serial communication. So the deliberation outside of the meeting, the risk of deliberation outside of the meeting was the reason that it was removed. And we talked about it in the the policy subcommittee and thought that that was still a reasonable. That was, that was still a good reason to keep it out of the the agenda.
I can see that argument, but we're warned so many times about being careful about not talking to too many people. I think it's reasonable to consider restoring this. And, you know, again, this is not something that I think would be used that often. It actually drives home that this should only be used for an issue of such overwhelming importance that when you basically take your one shot, you find somebody who's sympathetic. And you will go to the person you think is most likely to support. And if you can't find someone like that, you know, then that's it. Because as you said, you know, the open meeting law, you can't talk to someone else. So the advantage of having something like that is if you do have something that's time sensitive, you know, right now with the agenda request, if the chair says no, you can only have this discussed at the next meeting as a agenda request item and then discussed in full detail at the next meeting, which could be over a month later. And that's why I'm saying, I think it's worth restoring this. In my time on all the committees, I think there's only been two agenda requests that I know of that have been denied. So it's, it's not a huge number of items. And I would like to believe if there's some item that two school committee members believe is important and worth discussing in a timely manner, that we give them the benefit of the doubt. And if we find that this is happening too often and our meetings are getting cluttered by too much discussion on what should the water taste and what should the water look like, then we go back and we remove this. But I would, you know, put this in with the expectation that it's not going to be used that often.
Thanks, Stephen, I think I think we'll certainly consider it when we deliberate on this on this policy as a subcommittee.
Jose, it looked like Christina wanted to comment.
Sorry, Christina, thank you, thank you, Carrie.
Oh, no, that's okay. I just, I do, I do have some concerns about the serial impact of reaching out to a committee member and saying, do you support this? And if they say no, and then you go to somebody else, and then just by, you can, you can accidentally create an open meeting law violation very easily. And that's the only thing I'm worried about. We, as we, as we've all seen, the school committee changes over. We have four-year terms, but people can't always make that four-year commitment. And then you end up with a younger committee who may not even have gone through the programs that we need to go through because we're given a six-month period in which you learn about open meeting law violations and all of those other things. And it's very easy to accidentally create that serial conversation and be in violation. So that would be my only reason why not to implement that particular, you know, rule or amendment.
Thanks, Christina, Stephen.
I definitely see that point and I see that concern. But, you know, again, I think we can trust all of the members here. We really hammer home the point, you cannot engage in any type of correspondence that reaches four. This goes for all the issues that face the committee. You know, when we're discussing things that are going on, you know, we can reach out to very carefully people, but we have to make sure that it doesn't get up to four.
I think it's, it's not just the four. If you're within three, but you've had, if you've connected the triangle, that's a serial communication, even amongst three people. If A talks to B and B talks to C, you're in a serial communication, which is a violation of the open meeting law, even if you are in the minority of, you know, if you haven't reached a quorum. So I think it's a different definition of a violation of an open meeting law. We can go and, I think, Jose, let's double check that. But that was the impression that I got from the MASC when we talked about this last time.
Yeah, so Stephen, I just have a question for you, just, just, well, sorry, please make your point, but I just had a question.
Okay, so I think I have a simple solution. When we, if we decide to, you know, go with language like this, to say that two school committee members can request an agenda item, just explicitly state that if you are going to avail yourself of this opportunity, you can only reach out to one school committee member. And if that person says no, then you agree not to push it. So you can ask the chair, and if the chair denies, you can then ask one person and one person only.
Okay. The question I have for you, Stephen, is just, just thinking hypothetically, that imagining a scenario where the the policy subcommittee is very sensitive to the the danger of violating open meeting laws by just just imagining by by adopting language that would allow this. In the, in the amendments that you see before you, do you see this as as an improvement? That would, one improvement to allowing school committee members to to see agenda items appear on the agenda that may have had difficulty in in getting items on the agenda? I think, I think, I think I got my question out, but do you see this as an improvement?
It's, it's absolutely an improvement. And it also helps the public because the public, or can the, can the public use the agenda request as well in the public comments? Or later, this is only for school committee members. Because the public can only comment on items on the school committee agenda. And so I, I think that's, that's an issue for a later day. I definitely think that this is an improvement. And, you know, again, I don't expect that these things are going to be used that often. I think for the most part, you know, if your people are concerned about something, you should be able to make a good argument, we should be considerate and listen to each other. And if somebody feels that this is truly worth studying and debating, be willing to give each other the benefit of the doubt and say, okay, I trust you. I, I know you won't bring forward something like this frivolously. You know, as much as we love spending all of our time, you know, in these meetings, you know, this is why I seconded your motion at the last meeting.
Yeah. Well, that's, I think it's really useful feedback, Stephen. And I think I'm, I'm sure the subcommittee appreciates it. Any, any other feedback or comments or questions regarding the amendment to the agenda format policy? Amendments, I should say, to the agenda format policy? Okay, thank you all. We will move on, I do believe, to the to the next item, which is a first read amendments to the minutes policy. And I will share my screen and ask my wonderful colleagues, one of my wonderful colleagues, if they wouldn't mind reading the amendments or the, the, providing the first read of the the minutes policy as we have in our packet.
I'd be happy to.
Oh, Curtis, thank you. I don't, I don't see any reason, I'd love to hear your, your voice.
Non melodic tones, sure thing.
All right, let me, let me share my screen.
In its entirety?
In its entirety, thank you.
Sample policy suggested additions, changes are in red. File BedG Minutes. The meeting minutes of the school committee and subcommittees constitute the written record of subcommittee actions. They are legal evidence of what the action was. Therefore, the secretary of the subcommittee will be responsible for reporting in the minutes all actions taken by the subcommittee. The minutes shall contain what is done and not what is said. They shall be written in the third person using a template provided by the district office and will include: One, a statement on the nature of the meeting, regular or special, the time, the place, and the approval of the last regular and each subsequent special meeting. Two, names of the members present or absent annotated as to arrival and departure times if during the meeting. Three, a complete record of official actions taken by the subcommittee relative to the superintendent's recommendations to communications and to all business transacted. Resolutions and motions will be given in their exact wording, accompanied by the names of members moving and seconding, and a record of the results of the vote. Reports and documents relating to a formal motion may be omitted if they are referred to and identified by title and date. Four, notation of formal adjournment. Copies of the minutes will be sent to all subcommittee members at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting at which the minutes are to be approved. The approved minutes will become permanent records of the subcommittee. Minutes of public meetings and minutes of executive sessions that have been declassified will be in the custody of the superintendent, who will make them available to interested citizens upon request. And then there are some legal references, MGL 30A:22 and 66:10, and cross referenced KDB Public's right to know.
Thank you.
This has been NPR.
You know, I might pay, pay to hear your voice. I can see, I can see some sort of audible subscription.
That'll be five cents.
Thank you, Curtis. Any questions or points for feedback or any, any, anything that you'd like to report back to the subcommittee regarding the suggested amendments to the minutes policy? Stephen?
So I think this is another example where the onrush of technology changes what we do and how we should be doing it. For instance, we are recording the minutes, I'm sorry, we're recording the meeting right now. So if anybody wants to find out what was done, you can watch the video. And if you want to know what was said, you can actually go to YouTube, you can open up the transcript, and you can search for keywords. So a lot of the need to have, you know, full records, I actually prefer to have the written, you know, full transcript rather than watching the video because I can scan for certain parts. But, you know, given that we have the videos available, the need for detailed minutes is much less. And, you know, from a selfish point of view, somebody who's been typing up a lot of stuff, I would be very happy to minimize this. The difference I see is the committee versus the subcommittee is that we don't record a lot of the subcommittee meetings. For instance, we've had a lot of conversations on the fields over the years, and it has been very valuable to have extremely detailed minutes for those, you know, in terms of what was discussed, because we don't have those videos available. Would there be a willingness to record subcommittee meetings and archive those as well?
That's a, that's a good question and something that I think might be above my pay grade or the pay grade of this of this subcommittee. And I think we, I think I asked this question very early on, maybe at our very first subcommittee meeting. And it was, was, I'm not sure how how well discussed it was. But Carrie, do you have a response to Stephen's question?
So, yeah, I think with Zoom, with the meetings being virtual, it doesn't cost anything. And it's really just a matter of pushing a button and then uploading it to YouTube and putting it on the district site. When we go back to being in person, there's a dollar figure attached to it. And that's the reason we don't record subcommittee meetings, because we have to pay a camera person to be present. So I believe that's the issue.
Yes, Stephen?
But I think we could still record them even if we were in person, just having a computer on and just having it recorded. I mean, I think it would be a worthwhile experiment to try and to just see how.
This is a good question, and I don't know where in the school committee policy guideline where this might sit. I'm going to look to Joe, and Joe might know where some, some mention of policy-
There is mention of the public's ability to record a meeting, but they need to indicate that they're doing it. And it needs to be noted by the chair so that everybody is aware. That, that is a part of a policy, I would need to dig it up. But I, but I think what Carrie had indicated around traditionally, when we're in person, subcommittee meetings are often held in smaller rooms, rooms that can be found around the building as opposed to the main meeting room with the camera setup. So the, I, I think we'd be at risk of having subpar recordings where perhaps then allegations would fly around, well, I couldn't hear someone on the microphone the whole time. Or something to that effect, which, which would be another issue. So I, there would be a lot to think about, that's all I'm saying.
Again, I'm not saying that this should-
Record them, you need to think through it very, very clearly and detail.
Right, I'm not saying that this should replace the minutes, I'm just saying, you know, could this supplement?
Yeah, and, and, and just, I was just going to make this, this point, I think. And just to recognize that I see Carrie's, Carrie's hand. The, I think this could be something that the policy subcommittee could consider as a separate, you know, agenda item for us about the policy regarding, you know, recording of 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 meetings, committee and subcommittee meetings. But then going back to, to this document, which are the amendments to the minutes policy, I think you're, another way of phrasing your question, Stephen, is that without a recording of the subcommittee meeting, is there a worry that you're articulating about the public's ability to discern what was actually discussed at a subcommittee meeting? Is that without a detailed transcript, is that the concern that you're raising?
Right, and, you know, for instance, for the fields, there's been a lot of discussion back and forth on what has the subcommittee investigated over the years. And it's very useful to have a detailed discussion where we actually talked about all the things we looked at, what were the pros, what were the cons? And I'm just worried that if you have just a real bullet line summary, that you lose a lot of the conversation.
Okay, and Carrie, sorry, Carrie, I wanted to ask that of Stephen, but you had a question or a comment?
No, I was actually just going to ask, you know, it looks to me like the, the few lines in red above the numbered points, the minute shall contain what is done and not what is said. They shall be written- They shall be written in third person using a template provided by the district office. That appears to be separate from the fact of whether the meeting is being recorded or not, right? And not reliant on it. So my question is, where did that language come from? And if it's recommended from the state, what is the rationale?
I think, Joe, you can, oh, sorry, Julia.
I think Jake was actually going to say something.
Okay.
Yeah, I I believe that language is is actually from the MASC, the 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 School Committees Association, that, you know, particularly in the day and age of of meetings being televised in most communities, that, you know, the purpose of the minutes is to record votes. And then, you know, things that were that were voted on and thus done or not done. To to Steve's point about the fields, which was, you know, many conversations and long conversations and detailed conversations. It it is certainly appropriate to include presentations that were given to document, you know, what what in the fields, for instance, what was looked at, what was not looked at, what were alternatives? But Carrie, in answer to your question, that really comes from the MASC. And and I think it's 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 motive is to is to make the minutes usable and useful so that so that they're doing what they're really designed to do, which is document what was actually done by the governing body.
Thanks, Jake. Julia?
So I didn't know it also came from the MASC, but I'm pretty sure this is what the Attorney General advises and to go. This is this almost echoes the not concern, but the the question I raised earlier in the meeting around the minutes. It there is a possibility of the note taker, you know, taking notes in a way that gives greater emphasis to one conversation than another if you try to record all the comments. And so keeping it streamlined and simple is the most clear and unbiased way in my mind, this this kind of policy. I take Steve's point to heart that the subcommittee for the fields, you know, as a new committee member who had to vote on that within weeks of joining, and I was desperately trying to read anything I could. It was very difficult to find all the materials, despite Joe's Herculean efforts to organize everything and Stacy's Herculean effort to organize everything online. And so I do think there's a I wonder if it's a policy or, you know, I don't know where we put it, but making sure that the supporting documents for meetings are thorough and clear. And so or maybe there it's not just high level memos, but there are, sorry, high level presentations on PowerPoint or in slides. But there are like memos that explain logic, because that that would also be able to be read at a later date.
And just sorry, sorry, Stephen, I see I see your hand and Joe, Joe had his hand up as well. But Julie, I just want to make sure. I'm not sure if this is something that we would articulate in this policy framing. But it sounds like we there's almost a request that supporting documents be be detailed and informative, you know, almost reading as as memoranda. Is that is that something that?
I mean, it's hard because I would say if it's going to be a controversial issue, but you never know if something's controversial until it becomes controversial. So I, you know, I I don't, I don't know. But I guess I take to heart Steve's point. And I wonder what we can learn from that and how we can think about it differently without actually changing minutes being very straightforward and simple.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Julia. Joe, I think you had your hand up.
I was just gonna say, I'd point out that I think good minutes actually take more time than typing a transcript, unfortunately, because that attempting to boil down and summarize and make sure that all points are recorded in a way that allows someone to understand what happened, that that takes a lot of effort. And I think that's just one of the core challenges for all committees. So just trying to create the standardized template and attempting to standardize the the rails that people need to to run on. I think that's probably the most that this committee can hope for right now with respect to minutes at least.
One second, Stephen?
Well, I I love the idea of a standardized template. And you I love the idea of you answering the question, you know, what is the purpose of the minutes? What are we trying to do? If it's just to do a quick summary of what was done, then you know, that's great. When I take the minute, I try to record what everyone said so that I'm not playing any games of emphasizing one point over the other. I'm recording everything, so everything is there. What worries me is especially for subcommittees, if we meet at a time that's not conducive for members of the public to really come and, you know, and attend, you know, especially if we start going in person. And that's why I'm wondering, you know, is it possible to consider recording just all subcommittee meetings? I mean, you could even do the ridiculousness of having a Zoom meeting with everybody in the same room. And I just think it might be worth considering something like that and just investigating. And again, I'm happy to, you know, help investigate. I know some people I can talk to of just having, you know, recordings available of all subcommittees so that if somebody really wants to go back from the public and find out what happened, it's there.
Yeah, thanks, Stephen. I've got, I think the question I have is regarding the MASC guide guidance for for minutes, meeting minutes, as you hear my three on the background, is whether this guidance was written with the knowledge that full committee meetings are are being recorded and are thus, you know, represent archives of of the details of of of, you know, what happened in a meeting or or not. I think I would, I don't know if we know the answer to that question.
Right, because to me, it's very different if there's a video recording of the meeting that you can go back to versus this is the only record you have of what was discussed.
It could be, I think, that the, oh, sorry, Christina.
I'm I'm wondering if this particular conversation around recording meetings would be a valuable tidbit to take out and put into the retreat where we start looking at practices and protocols, because I think it's more of a practices and protocol. And it's something that we would probably have to talk to our technology director about what what we have that we're capable of using in order to record some committees. And if if there's any issues behind that. So it might be worthwhile tabling this conversation for those for a retreat setting and focusing on the format of the minutes themselves.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Christina. I think it's a great idea. So I think certainly the the feedback that we've gotten and may continue to get on these this policy, these policy amendments will be considered by the subcommittee. And and we'll certainly be reporting back to the full committee the the details of that discussion. Any other discussion or points of feedback for the amendments that you see for the minutes policy? Right, we are moving on then to the first read of amendments to the use of electronic messaging by school committee members.
Do you like me to read that?
Thank you, Julia. Let me get that up. And share my screen.
I know, Curtis. And there will be no podcasts of these meeting school committee policies in the near future. But I will do my best. Okay, so suggested additions and changes are in red. This is the B H E use of electronic messaging by school committee members. As elected public officials, school committee members shall exercise caution when communicating between and among themselves the electronic messaging services, including, but not limited to, electronic mail, email, text messages, social media postings, internet web forums, and internet chat rooms. Under the Open Meeting Law, deliberation by a quorum of members constitutes a meeting. Deliberation is defined as movement toward a decision, including, but not limited to, the sharing of an opinion regarding business over which the committee has supervision, control, or jurisdiction. A quorum may be arrived at sequentially using electronic messaging without knowledge and intent by the author. School committee members should use electronic messaging between and among members only for housekeeping purposes, such as requesting or communicating agenda items, meeting times, or meeting dates. Electronic messaging should not be used to discuss committee matters that require public discussion under the Open Meeting Law. Under the Public Records Law, electronic messages between public officials may be considered public records. Therefore, in order to ensure compliance, the district office manager should be copied on all electronic mail correspondence between and among members of the school committee. The district shall also provide district email addresses, which are archived, and must be used for all school committee business and correspondence. School committee members who do not have a computer or access to these messages shall be provided copies on a timely basis. And there are some legal references at the bottom.
Thank you, Julia. I what I'd like to do is ask Jake for to speak about some of the the language that we see in terms of amendments, if you don't mind, Jake.
Sure, you know, the language that is that is seen in the amendments to this policy is simply to, for the most part, it codifies one single position in the district for inclusion on a C C and communications. It doesn't name an individual, it names a a position that will outlast the individual's time here. We do currently provide email addresses, district email addresses to school committee members. And certainly, as the policy states, would be happy to provide things in writing and or there are school committees in the Commonwealth that provide Chromebooks or other types of laptops for folks if they're unable to provide that for themselves. Just, you know, for the sake of clarity, we do follow federal and state regulations in terms of archiving all of our emails, which are public documents for seven years. So to some degree, this is a redundancy. But we think if there's a a place to have a redundancy, it's certainly appropriate to do so in governing body communications among each other or between the governing body and and the superintendent or the business school business official or any other member of the school staff. So that's really where this 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 really just the the heart of this is it identifies an individual position that is to be C C'd on correspondence so so that we have a and and hate to use this word, but so that we have a an easy record of of communications among and between the administration and or the governing body.
Jake? Feedback and and points of discussion, Stephen?
So I'm just trying to understand what is being said here. Should this be just between school committee members or school committee members and the superintendent?
My interpretation would certainly be, you know, your your public officials who are elected. I'm a public official who is appointed by the the elected public official. So so my interpretation would be between the school committee or among school committee members, but also between the superintendent and school committee members.
Right, I was wondering if that should be added because it says right now just between and among members of school committee.
That's that's a great point, Stephen. Thank you for bringing that up, pointing out that.
Good point, yeah.
Because we should not be talking to anybody directly who works for the district. We should always talk to you first. We should not be emailing the principals directly. We should not be emailing.
That's correct.
And then the other thing is, I'm not quite sure if this is appropriate for me to ask. But on our homepage, it lists, you know, who's on the school committee. And it says, you know, schoolcommittee@mgrhss.org to email all of us. Could we have the individual school committee member email addresses placed there as well?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
They are there, but you have to click on them.
I I'm there right now, and the individual people are not listed, or at least not on the page I'm on.
If you click on their names, it doesn't pull up there.
No, no, no. I think the chat is disabled. Yes.
If you go to the contact us page, is it there?
We'll check and see. I mean, again, this is something that does need to be discussed at the full committee.
But I think your point is that it should be that that information should be more easily.
Yes.
Available.
Figure that out and get that get that on there.
Can email you and copy Stacy.
There you go, as a reminder. Thank you.
And the other points of feedback or or that folks want to discuss about these amendments to this policy? Okay, if not, then we are at the very final item on the policy subcommittee update agenda. And that is regarding member ethics protocols update discussion. I will do my best to summarize this, and I will ask my wonderful subcommittee members to please fill in. But the motivation of what we are, what we'd like to recommend to the full committee is that the full committee commit to a retreat in the in the future as an opportunity to review and examine school committee ethics and protocols. This retreat would also give an opportunity to our committee members to evaluate and reflect on basically any element regarding our existing ethics and protocols. We see this as being something that the full committee would would do periodically. It could be annually, we, you know, I think this is something for the full committee to decide. This is something that we recommend or are certainly offering is. Well, yeah, Carrie, did you fill in or Julie, my my subcommittee members? But that's something that we would like to recommend to the full committee and to our committee chair.
I actually will just add that the school committee protocols, I think, were last reviewed in two thousand nineteen. And it's good to review them annually and have each committee member sign off on them and to adopt them as a committee. They're not in the packet, unfortunately, but everyone should have received them as part of your part of the many documents you receive when you join the school committee from from Stacy. And I think the just going to say that the how much time we want to spend on reviewing the protocols and changing the protocols is is a point of conversation. I think the last time these were developed, a fair amount of time was taken in looking at other, what other school committees were doing at the time. And MASC keeps a lot of protocols, you know, from various school committees on the record, and they have them handy, and you can you can always request them. So a good place to start would be simply reviewing the ones that we have and seeing, you know, what are we missing? But we also talked about for the retreat, maybe looking at, you know, kind of how are we doing, right, with these? So how how do we evaluate ourselves or assess our, how we're doing as a group and as ourselves as individuals? As an exercise that we might do prior to the retreat and a way to come up, come into the discussion, having thought about it just a little bit.
And I and I might just add, I think implicit in our conversation, maybe not explicit, was an idea that I may not realize I'm violating one of these ethics or policies. There are four of us who are new on the committee, who we may be even more likely to, you know, violate these policies. And not because we try to violate a policy, but because we're trying to figure things out. But I feel like there's a part of this that's how do we also support each other in ensuring we are each, like, how do we?
like, how, how do we give each other feedback on that in a, in a respectful way so that we can ensure that we're all, you know, pl- you know, using the same guidelines effectively? So.
Yeah. Any, any comments or feedback on this proposal for a, a retreat ethics and, and protocols retreat?
Could I just add to it before taking questions that the other thing that we talked about doing during this retreat was using as a time to set goals for the school committee? So we had the ethics policy, the protocols and goal setting. And then the other thing that we need to do as a committee is to talk about the superintendent evaluation process, but that seemed to be a separate topic and not really one that was wrapped into these particular conversations. So we thought maybe that would be a, a different, a different workshop.
And I do have that under, as a quick discussion under our upcoming meetings because depending on where this conversation goes, we could maybe try to talk about calendars when we get to that point. We want to try to. I think a retreat is, and, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Steve, but since I already started.
You're both saying things I was going to say, so you.
I think a retreat is a really nice way to have a, a more informal discussion about how we're doing as a group. And I think it's, I think it's a, a great idea. And I know, you know, as things have, you know, things have gotten thrown at us and, you know, all of the unexpected things that have happened, we get out of the habit of things. So it's nice to even have written somewhere that we should review our ethics and our protocols once a year. You know, maybe it's in, maybe it's in November, right after, or in December, right after we have an election or whatever the case may be, but it might be nice to start plugging that into our master calendar so that we keep that in view and it gets carried from year to year. It doesn't get lost when we have sort of these moments of crisis, which, you know, we don't ever expect a moment of crisis, but they happen. And this would be a nice way to, you know, get, get those protocols and procedures down in some way and be able to track them. So I think it's a great idea.
Thanks, Christina. Stephen, did you, did you want to raise your point for?
I mean, one of the things I was going to say is that if we're going to have a retreat, I think there's several things we should discuss. Were you envisioning that this is a in-person retreat?
That's a great, we, we had not considered the format of the retreat. I think, you know, certainly something that I think our chair, and I'm not sure how that, how that conversation plays out, but I don't think that was something that we, we had discussed or decided upon.
Because I, I would just like to put in a pitch for an in-person retreat if we're going to do it.
The, the governor's order is lifted on June 15th. And while there's legislation pending, I think it only gets us through September for now. So.
I think it was actually extended to 2022, but it's still, I don't know that. Yeah. Because they're trying to, essentially what it sounds like they're trying to play out is across the state, and I've heard this in a lot of the MASC meetings that I've been to, so many people are participating in school committee meetings and other, and other governance boards that they're really trying to, trying to figure out if remote meeting is an effective way to disseminate more information to more people. So they're, they're talking about extending it even further than that.
I think the last year, Jake might knows, April, April 2022, the data, I don't, I don't recall, but.
I, I know that there's several people on this call right now who have taught students simultaneously, remote and in person. And so it might be worth having a retreat where there is still, you know, a Zoom component for people to come in. But I, I think something is lost in all the Zoom meetings where we don't get to interact with each other in the same way. If this had been pre-COVID, when we were talking about technology, I would just strain a little bit like this to look at Rob in the back and he would give me a thumbs up and let me know exactly what he's able to do. And, you know, that, that's something that we're not getting in the Zoom meetings. And I think it would be really good for us as a community, you know, to come together, not all the time, you know, but, you know, every now and then to have one of these in-person meetings, especially for topics like this.
Yeah. I think we'll have to look at like availability, right? Because sometimes it's really hard for Lanesboro folks to get to Williamstown. And if we were to have it in Lanesboro, you know, there's a considerable time thing that we, we can consider there, but definitely worth talking about in terms of retreat because there is, there is something nice about in-person meetings for sure.
Yeah. I think I'm very close to passing on the baton to Christina. The only question I have is regarding the process of setting up that retreat, which was, or at least, I think that's, that's completely in your court. Is that right, Christina? Or is that something you would do in conjunction with, with the policy subcommittee?
Well, I think if there's an element of that retreat where you want to collect data from the full committee, I think the, I think you as chair, as you met with your subcommittee, would sort of determine what that information, information was. If you wanted to do like a Google survey prior to the retreat, I think you guys would establish that and then, you know, you and I could work together to get that out. I don't know. Carrie?
So another element of this is whether we want to involve our MASC rep, you know, in some of these conversations and that may help determine the timing of it and how best to organize it.
I think then on that note, that is all from the policy subcommittee. I'm going to look at Carrie and Julia to make sure I didn't forget something. Thank you all for your patience. Christina, it's back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jose. Okay. So next up is the finance subcommittee update. So I can pass this back to Carrie.
Great. So we met last week, I believe it was Thursday, and we reviewed vouchers and accounts payable as we do every time we meet. There was not anything extraordinary that we discussed. We also talked about a couple of standing items. One was the bid documents, which were not ready at the time that we talked about it. So those are now actually in Joe's court in the next item. And then we talked about long-range campus planning. So the, the field has already come up in conversation tonight. The conversation about how we have the conversation is where we're at. In terms of the finance subcommittee, it's not clear to us what is the best way to go about doing this for the district. Joe has been talking to the staff, the facility staff and the ground staff about long-range planning in terms of the buildings and the grounds and things that may be coming up in terms of maintenance and repair and replacement. So that work has been ongoing and Joe can talk about that more specifically. So the, the question that we have, I think, for the committee is how to have the conversation with, I've also, we've also been posing this to the superintendent. How to have the conversation about the needs of not just the athletic infrastructure, but the campus in a way that is constructive and productive and can move us forward towards some decision-making should the committee want to make any decisions in the fall. In terms of the Williams gift, the fiscal year closes on June 30th, but the new numbers, so to speak, are not known to us until October. So we think that the fund has done very well in conjunction with the Williams Endowment. So it stands to reason that we have at least as much as we thought we would have. Of course, minus the expenses of the project on the accessibility and ADA compliance and safety issues, assuming that that goes to bid and that a bid is approved by this committee. So, you know, the numbers are still a little fluid because we have some wheels in motion and we don't know what the new numbers are going to be. All of that said, if we wanted to be in a position to make any kind of recommendations or decisions in November, let's say, or December even, that would be in time for, you know, doing work over the course of the next summer, right? The next, so, you know, you always want to back up from when you're going to have any facility, you know, in use. And so the facilities that have been part of the discussion have been, you know, a potential for a synthetic turf field and a potential for a track. And we're assuming at this moment in time that we're no longer talking about ADA compliance and Title IX and safety because we've dealt with that. So how do we as a committee? I'll go back to the original statement. How do we have the conversation in, in a way that is both constructive and productive and moves us forward toward a goal of making decisions if we choose to do so, should we choose to do so? So part of the conversation has been around sort of general strategic planning with the district, right? So one of the criticisms, I would say, not a criticism, one of the comments that came up during the last round of conversations was that it wasn't clear, and in fact, Julia, this might have come from you, it wasn't clear how the athletic infrastructure projects, the potential projects fit into the general strategic planning for the district. Or, and then others, other comments were that it wasn't clear how it fit into the general academic programming of the district, right? You know, when we built the building, the academic program drove, the educational programming drove the building. So how does the educational programming drive the athletic infrastructure, if that's what we're talking about? So this is the sort of upper level of these conversations that we've been having. And we don't really have a charge from the school committee at this point in terms of how the committee would like the finance subcommittee to go about furthering the conversations. So I'm going to stop there and see if Jake or Joe want to add anything to that.
Not tonight on that topic.
Okay. So that's some more by way of information that we've been having that conversation. And also that Joe is going to be spending some time catching up Ursula because she's not been part of, of the conversations up to this point. So she, she needs to, I guess, do a little bit of homework on that as well. Jose?
Carrie, I, um, I'm, I'm trying to stop myself from, from, from suggesting this, but I think I'm going to do it anyway. But I, I wonder if, and this is definitely inspired from the conversation that we had regarding the, the policy subcommittee. You know, I see the retreat that we'd like to schedule for the policy subcommittee as an opportunity for the full committee to engage in what the policy subcommittee engages with in, in detail, more, perhaps more regularly than the full committee. I don't know. But certainly in the case of the finance subcommittee, I wonder if a, a retreat that allows us to think creatively about, about the questions that you've asked us, if that would give us the bandwidth, the space to, you know, to, yeah, to, to, you know, engage in fruitful discussion and, and maybe to provide the kind of guidance that you might like from the full committee. I don't, I don't know if that would be welcome or, or useful.
Julia? I like that idea and I also think this would be a, there are experts out there who lead this type of work and I think we would benefit greatly from hiring somebody who can guide us in this, have tools to facilitate a meeting where we all are able to express what we're, you know, what questions we should be thinking about, et cetera. So I would just encourage us to consider hiring somebody to support this work.
Yeah. I wonder if like the, the Carrie's recommendation about, well, the idea about involving an MASC, our MASC rep at a policy retreat. If this, this could be, you know, this, this person or consultant could be, could be involved in a finance retreat of some sort.
Yeah, Julia, it sounded like you had someone more within the, more specific in mind. Do you want to elaborate on that?
So I don't know enough about the skillsets of the MASC folks, but there are people who specialize in strategic planning. There are people who specialize in bringing groups together to discuss our values, right? Like I think any decision that we make has to be grounded in our collective values as a, as a body, as an institution, as a community. And I think there are, I don't know the skillset of MASC folks, but to me, this feels like a more specialized skillset. And I'm happy to, I'm happy to find, like I can put out my network, but Jake may know people who, you know, who do this.
Yeah, I, I, it, it's an excellent idea to, to, you know, it's, it's like lots of areas of work that we do. We're, we do a lot of things as a district administration and as school committee members, but there are people that do this professionally for a living and where we have maybe done it once or twice or aspire to do it, they've done it 500 times. So, you know, I, I would certainly be open, Julia, to talking about and comparing networks about who's out there to do this work. But, but it is definitely work that would benefit from professional facilitation. No question. I, I think both on the, on the, on the overall strategic plan for the district, but also perhaps even a, a more focused and strategic plan for the, the campus or, or the campuses of our three schools as well.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Other thoughts on this? Otherwise, I think I can just turn it over to Joe for the business administrators update. Unless Christina, you want it to come back to you first?
No, go ahead. You do it, Carrie. It's all you.
All right.
All right. So under, thank you. So under business administrator update, two things. First off, an update on the bid process for the ADA safety and Title IX fields project. We have gone through more revisions than I cared to count at this point with Perkins Eastman and Traverse trying to get these bid documents ready and out. As of last week, we finalized those documents so that they felt faithful, accurate, clear, suitable for, for distribution. They're in the process of going live right now. Officially, the, the timeline for contractors to review those documents and submit, submit proposals will transit through June 30th and on June 30th bids will be opened. That is the timeline that we're operating under right now, which is much tighter than, than we ever cared to make it. The design team continues to indicate that this kind of a timeline from bid opening to contract start date, which we have listed in the contract as July 5th, or in the bid documents as July 5th, that that is not unreasonable. That is their expert opinion. We have formally asked via email and received confirmation that if this process fails to produce either an adequate number of bids. either an adequate number of bidders or prices that are consistent with the estimates that, that have been put out by the design team, that we have the right to rebid this without any additional costs incurred with that design team. And they have confirmed that that is something that they would do. And so, you know, that, that is really a worst case kind of, kind of opportunity, unfortunately, because i- it's not as though you would bid it another month or two from now. It's something where we would need to wait until next year when it might be roped into a larger project depending upon the, the will of the committee. So that's where we stand right now. And it does mean that we will be asking the committee to try to find time right there at the end of June or beginning of July to review those bids once they're opened and either select one or reject all bids. Your review and selection is really only based on making sure that bidders are, are qualified and eligible and then selecting the lowest cost. So, you know, y- your process there is not terribly detailed. But, but it is significant as far as making a determination as to whether or not the project will go forward. So that's something to, to keep on your radar for the end of this month. And we can start to think about meeting dates that will, that will fit now that we are getting those bid documents out. So that's my update. It's, it's a somber one, but that's where we are.
What's the, that's the contract start date? And then the, what's the expected time to do the work? And therefore, is there like a plan B for fall athletics if fields aren't ready?
The timeline as specified within the bid documents allows for all pre-seasons and then seasons to proceed as, as planned with the one exception being that cross-country might need to push its first home race back a bit depending upon the speed with which the turf takes hold and is able to take that kind of a pounding. So that, that's the one thing within the, the timeline that has some variability. Everything else is actually baked into those bid documents. So it does not negatively impact our fall sports.
I, I have a very quick one, Steve. It sounds like we should add July 1 as an upcoming meeting to the list of upcoming meetings, Christina. July 1 is a Thursday.
Yes, July 2nd is a Friday.
I will be coming to you for my first official vacation, but I don't mind. Steve?
For the bid documents, is there going to be some kind of clause that would specify what would happen if they are not able to meet the timeline they agreed to?
Yes, there, there is a damages clause related to not meeting the timeline. I'm not recalling the dollar value per day off the top of my head, but, but that does exist. All right. So if there are no further questions, I'll pop into the next one, which is, which is much more upbeat, but bittersweet upbeat in that we, we have two financial assistants within the district. One has traditionally handled payroll and benefits. The other one has handled payables. And, and one of them, Brenda Rondo, who has been with the district for 15 years, serving virtually every facet that we have within the business office. Earlier this year announced her retirement, which it, it hurts. She is, she is the heart. She is the foundation. She is someone who has seen it all. She is, it's, it's now public knowledge. She's moving to Texas to be closer to her, her daughter and grandchildren, which is a wonderful thing, but, but we will sorely miss her. She is, her last day in the office will be July 9th. So that did lead to a, a process of attempting to figure out what to do once she departs. And we were fortunate enough to, to receive Ann Donati, who had been with the two elementary schools as SU 71 for seven years as, as their primary bookkeeper. She had then been with the regional school district. Once we regionalized pre-K through 12, for the first six or so months of, of that process. And then she's been in Williamstown Town Hall within their accountant's office since. And so she, she returned beginning of this week, June 7th. She is now our financial assistant in charge of payables. And Rena Sharma, who was our financial assistant in charge of payables, has transitioned to, to take on the role of payroll and benefits. And she's been working closely with Brenda within that transition process for the last six weeks now. So we're, we are extraordinarily grateful to, to Rena for taking on that challenge for Ann for coming back to the district with us. And, and we're going to miss Brenda a lot, but that's the, that's the financial assistant update that I've got for you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next two items are on our agenda are kind of housekeeping items. We have to do them yearly at this time. The first one is to appoint the district treasurer and the assistant treasurer. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Donna Neri as district treasurer and Rena Sharma as assistant treasurer of the Mount Greylock Regional School District.
Second. Go ahead, Julia.
Okay, Julia, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Open by nine.
Green.
Milla, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. And the next item is the authorization to borrow. So I would like to make a motion to authorize the district treasurer and or assistant treasurer under the provisions of the general laws, chapter 71, section 16G as amended by chapter 134 of the Acts of 1972, with the approval of the chair of the school committee to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and to issue a note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with the general law.
Second.
Three seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Open by nine.
Green, I.
Why?
Thank you. That motion passes. Next up on our agenda is the superintendent report.
Thank you, Christina. I have several items here tonight, more than actually appear on the agenda. I will try to move through them quickly. The, the first is going to be just a brief, brief presentation on where we are with school choice and enrollment and class size. I know that's, that's vital information for all of you. And so that will be the first piece of my report tonight. And then the other pieces will, will move through pretty quickly. So I'm going to share my screen and present this as a presentation. And I will, you know, certainly ask anybody who has any questions along the way, just, just pipe up and verbally let me know that you have a question or a concern and we can stop and address it. Just, you know, we're, the last few slides are going to talk about the number of school choices that we're at, the number of school choice slots we're actually opening up this year. The rest of these slides are really how we arrived at those numbers, sort of a, a base in, in philosophy and what we were thinking about. So as, as we consider opening up school choice slots or not opening up school choice slots, we look at the purpose of school choice. We look at the need to protect the investment that Lanesboro and Williamstown residents make in their homes. We need to ensure that we have adequate space and, and are protecting the investment that people from our two member communities are making, but also have adequate space to serve students from communities with whom we have tuition agreements. And then, of course, we have to protect class size because that is good for instruction. It's good for student achievement. It's good for the wellbeing of our students. And for that matter, it's good for the wellbeing of our staff. Very briefly, you've seen this before. The purpose of school choice is not to be a moneymaker for school districts. School choice should never add labor costs. It should not add to administrative costs. It should not add to facilities or utility costs. And it should not negatively impact the organization or operation of any existing classroom, nor a school, nor the district. School choice, as it is envisioned in Massachusetts, is really to fill in, for lack of a better term, empty desks in classes, in classrooms where there could be another student or two. This is a way to, to fill those slots and, and have some financial recompense for doing so. We do owe it to the residents of Lanesboro and Williamstown to protect their investment. While school choice is an excellent way to allow non-resident neighbors to become very welcome members of our school community, we do have to be careful about, about the numbers that we let in. School choice has some really positive benefits, including that it can sometimes increase the diversity in a number of ways of our student body. However, individuals and families who have made very specific choices about where to rent or purchase a home reasonably have the expectation that their choice of home location and the school that goes with that home location is honored in many, many different ways. Likewise, people without children in the communities of Lanesboro or whose children have already been through school in Lanesboro and Williamstown, she can and should expect that the investment that they make in their schools every single year through paying their tax bills is nurtured and protected. So, you know, just as a, as a bit of baseline information, the Mount Greylock Regional School District historically tends to spend between seventeen to eighteen thousand dollars per pupil on the students that we educate. School choice tuition is generally capped at five thousand dollars per student. Thus, we, we get back to the beginning of this slide where we really owe it to our residents to protect their investment in their schools for the children that live in their communities. We also have tuition agreements, as you know. The Lanesboro Elementary School has a tuition agreement with the town of New Ashford. The Mount Greylock Regional School has a tuition agreement with, with the towns of New Ashford and Hancock. These agreements guarantee openings for students from both of these towns. And, and these agreements also much, much more closely approximate our per pupil expenditures than does the five thousand dollars associated with incoming school choice students. Class size. Class size is one of several variables that, that can and does impact student achievement. There is much, much research, some of it conflicting, but I think in large part, most of it reaching a, a pretty general consensus in our common sense as parents and as educators and just as people suggest to us that class size matters. Teaching is a hard job. Being a paraprofessional is a hard job. And splitting your attention 12 ways is a very different thing than splitting your attention 23 or 24, 25 different ways, particularly with younger students. Protecting and ensuring reasonable class sizes, particularly in the early grades, pre-K through grades three and four, it's an ethical responsibility of our school districts to really be protective of those class sizes. And it's an ethical responsibility to be protective the entire way through high school of class size. Another piece that, that, you know, coming from a place like Pittsfield that, that has great impact from students choicing out, being a responsible, respectful, ethical neighbor is also a value we should embrace when we're making school choice considerations. When we bring students into our community to go to school, those students are leaving their home community. And that has impacts in many different ways that go beyond finance, that go beyond class size. So looking ahead to the next school year, we really had to dig in and consider the year that our students, families and staff are just finishing up. And as Cindy Sheehy said a couple of years, a couple of, that feels like a couple of years ago, a couple of hours ago, when she was talking about her school improvement plan, this was quite a year that we just finished. We, we also consider the year we need to have in the upcoming school year. And I included a link here to the Desi acceleration roadmap. So you can, we'll be talking more about that over the summer. But you can get an early preview of some of the things we'll be doing next year to make sure that our kids are on track or back on track. We have the return of, of families who chose to homeschool over the 2021 school year. If you recall, last year, the year that we're in now that we're just finishing up, we, we had 60 students homeschooling, 60 plus homeschooling. Right now, the paperwork that we have in for plans that are either already approved or looking to be approved, we have only five families representing 14 students that are looking to homeschool across the entire district from both of our towns. So this has an impact on the number of students that are going to physically be in our schools in the fall. Some of you understand this in much deeper ways than I do because it's your profession. The real estate markets in Lanesboro and in Williamstown and in, in the rest of the Berkshires and in many areas really can, is continuing to be an evolving situation with remote work becoming a real possibility and potential for people, people no longer needing to be absolutely linked to Washington DC, to Boston, to New York City. And so we, we have reason to believe that there's just a lot of houses changing hands right now. And that a lot of those houses that are changing hands are coming with gifts to our community by way of young people who will be attending our schools. And then, of course, in Williamstown on Cole Avenue, we have, I believe, 40 plus new housing units that will be opening up at some point over the school year. So in short, I would say regarding school choice, as we put our heads together and worked to figure this out this year, we're entering this summer and fall with many unknowns that have to inform how we approach school choice in the upcoming year. So to cut right to the chase, this is a chart, very simply, the grade level, the number of openings that we are recommending at this point for the first round of school choice and the current requests that we have sitting on file. You will notice that at Lanesboro Elementary, we are recommending no openings in any grade level at this point. And I'm going to quickly switch screens here and hopefully, yeah, so this is a chart. We're going to concentrate on this 2021 section here underneath the yellow umbrella. This is our total enrollment, grade by grade, and the number of students in classrooms. And I think this becomes kind of self-explanatory about why right now, as we head into the end of June, we are recommending no new school choice seats at Lanesboro Elementary. In fact, we're actually quite concerned with where grade four is shaping up, looking at 23 students in each of our grade four sections and then grade six, 22 students in each of those. So those are items that we are going to be keeping a a very close eye on, really on a daily basis as we, as we go through the summer. So for Lanesboro, we're recommending no new school choice openings for the 21, 22 school year. Looking at Williamstown Elementary, we're recommending very few school choice openings at Williamstown Elementary. We are recommending one opening in kindergarten. We have 11 requests currently. We're recommending two openings at grade one. We currently have five requests. And we're recommending two openings at grade two. And we currently have two requests. And for grade three, Um, and for grade three, four, five and six, we are recommending no, no school choice openings for the upcoming school year. And again, just to um, take a look at this uh, on a Williamstown, um, there it is. Uh, you, you know, again, we're looking underneath this yellow umbrella of twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, you can see where, where our classes are, are looking. Um, forty-nine total kindergarten students. Right now, we have sixteen students in each section. Um, fourteen in grade one, thirteen in grade two. Uh, again, we're, we're, we're keeping an eye on a couple of these grade levels. Um, you know, just to make sure that we're not uh, getting, getting big to the point where, where it no longer makes sense or feels fair to the kids or to the staff who are staffing that. So, you know, getting back to the presentation, again, really, you're only recommending five openings at Williamstown Elementary. One in kindergarten, two each in grade one and grade two. Uh, looking at Mount Greylock Regional School, our middle and high school, um, we are recommending at this point uh, zero openings in grade seven, five openings in grade eight, three openings in grade nine, no openings in grade ten, which is our, our largest grade, uh, going to be our largest grade, our current freshman at the school. We're recommending um, three openings at grade eleven and recommending four openings at grade twelve. And this is what we will base our, our lottery um, on. And uh, so really, that's the, that's, that's where we are. Um, again, just as, you know, I, I, I believe, um, you know, last year, around this time of year, I, I suspect that this district, like many districts, made the choice that there were simply so many unknowns that you're going to keep school choice uh, really constricted. We are, we are making that same uh, choice. I do have one more slide that I want to share uh, that I, that I did skip. So if you'll entertain for one more second. Um, moving forward. So per school committee policy, the first round of the lottery for the few openings that we do have will be held next week. The second round of the lottery is held the week before school starts. So that will be the end of August. Again, per school committee policy. Um, just as a reminder to you and anybody from the public that's interested, Mass General Law uh, um, Part Seventy-Six, Section Twelve B, Subsection J states that any sibling of a student already enrolled in the receiving district shall receive priority for admission to said district. So where there are openings, siblings of current students, current school choice students will receive priority and we will not be um, holding a lottery if siblings take up those slots. We will continue to watch enrollments really on a daily basis at this point to track the ups and the downs. So we're ready for later on in the summer. Um, we will continue to watch enrollment again daily to see where other considerations may become necessary considerations, such as perhaps adding a section to a given grade level or should a grade level contract removing uh, a section so that we can use that staff and, and add a section somewhere else where it's perhaps needed more. Um, we would suggest that the current openness or, or probably more appropriate put, lack of openness for school choice is not a permanent pathway. Um, but that, you know, we, we suspected we'll be going through sort of a, a bit of an agonizing process like we did this year um, annually to make sure we get this right and that we're balancing the needs and, and, and what our, our residents deserve, what our students that are tuitioning in, who have guaranteed slots deserve and um, making sure that we are uh, you know, just being protective of the investment that Lanesboro and Williamstown make uh, in our, in our uh, school department and in our campuses and in our schools. So um, of course, happy to take questions, take comments. Uh, Julia?
I, thank you. Um, I know this is likely an set of agonizing decisions, uh, keeping everything that you described in balance. Um, I really just have a technical question.
Sure.
When you say the first lottery is, you know, there's two different lotteries. Once somebody is on the waitlist, are they, then the next lottery just adds to that list? Is that how it works?
Yes.
And?
That's, that's my understanding, Julia, yes.
And then over the summer, are you able to take people off the waitlist if you, for example, discover a family moved away?
I think we, i- i- it would depend on the size of the waitlist at that specific grade level and at that specific school. Um, I, 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 I would guess that based on the numbers of requests we have, we still will need to hold a second lottery later in the summer.
Sure. Um, I, I'm thinking more like fourth grade at Wes, a family moves away. Uh, maybe fourth grade's a bad example. I'm just curious about them because there's nobody coming in. But you decide there actually is a space and you have a waitlist, but we haven't approved spots being filled. Do we have to wait till August to do that?
Joe, do you want to weigh in on this, please?
Yeah, so a, a couple of things. The, the school committee policy on school choice, the, the school committee determines whether or not it's going to participate in the school choice program or not. The administration determines the number of slots that will be made available. So that's in the policy manual. Um, at the state level, i- if we're participating and if we're opening slots, then the first lottery is required to be held prior to July one. If we choose to have another lottery, the only rule is that we need to hold that prior to November one.
Right.
So those are the parameters that we need to work within, which means we, we could sit, the administration could say in August, we feel comfortable opening up another two slots. We're going to do that because we'd rather do it prior to the start of school instead of after the start of school, which I think makes sense for everyone if it were to happen.
So we, we will be, as I said, we will be keeping and, and we, you know, our central office staff, the principals. Um, y- you know, we, we, that class size is really important. Um, we, we understand that, that the schools in Lanesboro and in Williamstown and then our shared school, the middle and high school is why many, many families um, relocate to our towns. And so we, we understand that class size is an important part of that uh, of that calculus. So we will be keeping a, a eagle eyes upon that as the summer progresses. And, and I've had probably twenty conversations with families who are looking to choice in and we have um, we have just been very honest right from the start that, you know, we encourage them to apply. Uh, but that here is our reality as I see it at the moment I'm speaking to them and that my, my advice as a dad is the same as my advice as a superintendent. If you are committed to having your child go somewhere other than where you live, please start looking at other options um, outside of, of our school district because we are going to have very limited slots available. Jose?
Thanks Jake, and uh, thanks as always for the thoughtful, informative presentation. The, um, just, just thinking about the, the staff to student or student to staff numbers that we're seeing in Lanesboro. I think fourth grade was one that you highlighted and I'm sure there's another grade level that you highlighted. If, if that number, which I think stands at above twenty, twenty-three, if, if from what I'm remembering, um, you said you're, you're looking at that number. But I don't know exactly what you, what you mean by, by looking at it. How, what, what is uh, what are the options in terms of responding to that number increasing?
Yeah, so I, I just pulled that back up on the share screen, Jose, and I think this is probably the one you were referring to is the, the, the twenty-three at grade four um, students per class. So, you know, really to, to put that in as, as plain of language as possible, that there is a point, I, I don't know exactly what the point is in this school district, that there is a point at which we would say, okay, we have one section of fourth grade at Lanesboro that is, let's say it's twenty-six students. Um, I, as a superintendent at that point, would say, um, that does not feel okay to me. I don't believe that is going to best serve our students. I don't believe it's going to best serve our families. I don't believe it's going to best serve our staff. So at that point, I would be sitting down with Joe and with uh, Mr. Pratt, the principal, and looking at how, how do we find funding to create another section and add another teacher to the staff? And, and that would, that would be true for, for any of our three schools. But that and it's, that's what we're talking about, Jose.
And then just to follow up, I, I, I'm sure, I, I think I'm, I know the answer to this question, but I, I'd like to ask it just to uh, maybe to clarify matters for, for, for all of us. But um, there are real reasons in place why students from Lanesboro couldn't attend Wes to help alleviate some of these, these stresses on a particular section. Does that, is that, I think I, is there, are there, there are genuine reasons why that's, and I, I think there should be a question mark in that statement.
The regional agreement speaks to that. Just before Jake talks about any philosophical thing, that the regional agreement has some pretty clear language there. And modifying the regional agreement would require a vote of the two towns to be affirmative.
Yeah, so, so for instance, Jose, thank you for that, Joe, because that, that's the, that is the correct place to start. Um, that, there is a process by which a, a hypothetically, a second grade parent from Lanesboro that perhaps works in Williamstown can apply for within the school district, school choice. And they, that, that request is treated just like an out of district school choice. Um, but per the regional agreement, we, we cannot say to a family from Lanesboro or to two or three families, uh, or the family that has triplets who are in fourth grade, uh, we need you to go to Williamstown this year. Um, so, so does that answer your question between the two of us?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns on that? Um, I, I hope that next year where I have my act together, Steve?
So yeah, I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. You said that no one would be asked to go to another school. If we did have a situation, did, did I misinterpret? Did I miss here?
No. No, that's true. We, we, we cannot per the regional agreement say to a family, right, you're not going to Lanesboro, you're going to Williamstown.
Right. I was wondering, and this could be opening a terrible can of worms, that available to someone as an option?
A family can request that. And, and, and uh, just, just like somebody can request school choice.
Right.
And, and um, if, if, if openings exist in those grade levels where it's requested, it, it is certainly something that could happen.
And if you did that within it, then put you in the other school for as many years as you want?
I would need to dig a little deeper into our policy manual. I believe the way that we treat that inter-district school choice. I believe, I believe we treat that legally and ethically the same way we would treat a student coming from Pittsfield, Central Berkshire, Clarksburg. And so once that space was granted, that space would belong to that student until they either graduated, matriculated onto the next school or the family chose to end that relationship. Yes. Yep.
And just to, just to follow up on, on Stephen's question, I think the, again, to just, just to clarify matters, if a Lanesboro family were to request that their, that their child attend Wes, um, they would have to enter the school choice program and they would be treated just the same as any other family who were participating in the school choice program. So they would have barring siblings already in the receiving school have, have equal odds as any other family. Um, whether it be a Williamstown family who wanted to in Lanesboro or, or the other way around. They're effectively, oh, is alright, yeah.
That's correct, Jose. Any other questions on that? As I said, next year, we will, we, we hopefully will not have the amount of uh, of, of churn and tumult that we had this year with, with the in and out of folks. So we will, and, and we will, of course, keep you updated over the summer as to where we are. Carrie?
So, sorry, I just wanted to go back to the question of um, homeschoolers uh, potentially returning to the district. So we have sixty homeschoolers this year. And I think you said we have fourteen or fifteen next year. Um, do we know that those are all, the difference between those two, those, those are all the students who are returning uh, to our district or not necessarily?
Yeah, a, a good number of, we, we asked um, via a letter that went home to all of our homeschool families earlier uh, in the spring. We, we asked them to please contact the school and begin the registration process by a date late in May if their intention was to return back to school that the, the choice to homeschool was really a one year because of the pandemic. Uh, and we got a, a, a really brisk rate of response on that. Um, a- as, as Stacy and I were looking at the, the homeschool families this week, uh, the, the, the fifteen students we have currently, tho- those are students that, that have traditionally homeschooled from year to year for the most part. I think uh, eleven or twelve of them would be in the category of their parents have submitted a plan every year. I think three or four of them uh, are perhaps new, but they are, they're families that are new to the area that are desiring to homeschool their children. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, if there is nothing more on school choice and enrollments and all of that really important information, I do have a few more things. Uh, mostly thank yous, but just a, a quick staffing update. Um, as you know, uh, very grateful to, to Patrick for um, for, for getting us through these, these tumultuous months and getting us through the, the, the tiered uh, monitoring, the tiered focus monitoring program. But uh, Patrick has been serving as an interim and we will have our first round of interviews for our permanent director of uh, pupil personnel services beginning on Monday. Um, we have two days of interviews and then we have a, a, a second round with um, with several administrators who, who will comprise our finalists. We have about thirteen or fourteen people from the community, teachers, parents, representatives from the pack who are uh, who have helped us develop questions, helped us develop scenarios and who are actually sitting on the interview committee. So we, we hope that by uh, our regular July meeting, we will be bringing forward a recommendation for the permanent uh, director of pupil personnel services for the uh, approval of the school committee. Um, I do want to thank, sorry, I have a, a whiny dog here to my left. I apologize if you hear yelping. I promise he's just being nudgy, not being uh, maligned in any way. Uh, I would like to thank both of our town meetings, the Lanesboro Town Meeting and the Williamstown Town Meeting for approving our budgets. Uh, I'd like to thank those of you who were able to go and, and cover for me as I was not able to be there. Uh, and I, I would really just um, uh, and, and this will make him blush. I would like to thank Joe for just um, I, I think we've heard Herculean uh, put on to Joe's efforts in a couple of other areas here tonight. Um, getting the budget ready during the, the turmoil of this year and um, translating that budget to the town finance committees. Um, and, and, and getting to uh, you know, to, to really positive affirmations from our two uh, member town, town meetings to uh, to get our budget passed. Uh, just really nice work. So very grateful to Joe, very grateful to his team, very grateful to all of you for your work on the budget and the finance subcommittee. And very grateful to the folks who went out to the town meetings and supported our budgets and to the, uh, town finance committees and, and to the town leaderships, uh, of Williamstown and Lanesboro for supporting us in, in what we consider to be just some of the most important work that happens, uh, on any given day in our towns, which is public education. I would like to add my thanks to, uh, to, to our earlier round of applause and thanks to, uh, to our, to our staff and our team of teachers here, as this is our last meeting before school is out. Um, this was a remarkable year and, um, it, it took remarkable people to get us through this remarkable year and, um, very grateful to just our entire team here. Uh, in, in Shakespeare's play, as you like it, Duke Signor says, uh, sweet are the uses of adversity. And if you Google that quote, you'll get a kick out of the rest of, of, uh, what Duke Signor has to say. Let's just say it involves venomous toads. Um, but, uh, I'll just take the first part of, of Shakespeare's line, sweet are the uses of adversity. This year, um, this adversity has taught us much about ourselves and about working together. Um, we've had some vehement disagreements in our communities about how to approach education during the pandemic. And one thing it's proved to the new superintendent is that these are communities that can, um, agree in very strong ways and in very substantive ways. But these are communities that keep talking and keep communicating and keep pushing through and keep learning and keep refining, uh, their thinking. And so, uh, I, I think the, the, the uses of this adversity to, to all of us at the school department are very sweet indeed, and we're very grateful to everybody who helped to get us through this year. Uh, including all of you, including our union colleagues, including our, our team of employees and our colleagues here in the district and including our parents, just who showed, uh, amazing flexibility. Uh, and to our students who likewise showed amazing flexibility and grit and determination. And so our thanks to all of you. Uh, I would like to thank and announce that Jose Constantine has been asked to serve on the panel that will be choosing the Williamstown, uh, town manager. And, uh, we're, we're very grateful that the, uh, leaders in town included a member and elected member of our school committee to engage in that work because that is a, just a key crucial relationship. And we're very grateful to Jose for giving up, uh, you know, uh, you know, you must have oodles and noodles of spare time, Jose. Uh, we know that's not true, which makes it even more precious and special that you would be willing to do this. So thank you for doing this. Uh, important, important work. Almost done here. I, I would like to say, you know, uh, Charlie, uh, McWeeny did a, did a lovely video for us and I think inspired us as he thanked us and he certainly gave us something to think about with school start times and he, and he left us, I think, with tremendous words of wisdom about the power of public education and the necessity of public education. Um, and so I would like to thank, uh, Charlie, then I would, I would just like to thank all of our seniors and, um, all of their families and everybody who, who helped to get our seniors through. Um, wh- what is a year that I, I don't know who else in, in, in American history has had a year quite like this year's high school seniors. And, um, I, I guess one of my regrets this year is that, uh, I did not get to know these seniors in the way that I generally like to. Some of them, I've really just seen their face for, uh, the first time, uh, not on a video screen, many of them, but, um, rest assured that, uh, the communities that, that provide their treasures to our school via our students and our senior class have provided us with just a remarkable group of treasures this year. And, um, I, I just always take pleasure in seeing what the next two or three or four years bring and seeing what the next five to ten years bring. Because there are just some remarkable human beings, uh, making their way from our school into whatever is next for them. And so congratulations to our seniors. Congratulations to their parents and their guardians and their caretakers. The community has, has raised a remarkable group of young people to send into the bigger world and they will do our communities very, very proud. And then finally, in the superintendent's
You just went, just muted yourself by accident, Jake.
I am sorry. Although that might be welcome relief at this point in the evening, uh, I would like to honor, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven,
He muted yourself again.
Thank you. Okay. I'm just gonna hold this paper because apparently it's just heavy enough to make my, my mute button. Uh, nine retirees from the Mount Greylock Regional School District this year. Uh, these nine retirees account for almost two hundred and fifty cumulative years of service to the community, to the town of Lanesboro, to the town of Williamstown, to students and families that join us from elsewhere. Uh, but, but most importantly, this represents two hundred and forty-eight years of excellent dedicated service to children. And, um, for me, I, I can't really think of, of any, uh, any pursuit that is a better use of a professional life than to help the next generation get ready to, to lead and to help the next generation maintain in our society what works and to get the next generation ready to fix the many things that are broken. And so tonight, uh, we'd like to honor Michael Ferris, who is a paraprofessional from Mount Greylock Regional School who is retiring with eighteen years of service of serving students that, uh, you know, paraprofessionals serve people that really, really need to be served. And so, Michael, congratulations and thank you. And I will remind all of these people that our, our substitute lists are open and awaiting their names and we, we definitely hope to see them back. So congratulations to Michael. The next name on this list, um, I was six years old when this individual started working, uh, for Mount Greylock. Susie Gelati has been the assistant to the People Services Department for forty-four years. We honored Suzie briefly tonight as we talked about, uh, you know, the state process that we've been going through. But, uh, I have to tell you, I, I think too, you know, even in my short time here, if there, if there is one person who has just left, um, left nothing, uh, on the field in her pursuit of helping students and families, it's Suzie Gelati. And, uh, Suzie, thank you and congratulations to you. And, uh, yes, well, well deserved applause. And, um, Suzie can absolutely count on probably fifty to a hundred and fifty phone calls, emails and in-person visits to pick her brain next year, uh, in the year after, because she simply is a master of her craft. And, uh, we will miss her. Lynn Hayden has been a paraprofessional at Williamstown Elementary School for thirty-two years. When you consider the number of lives that have been enriched and touched and made better, when you consider the number of students whose opportunities have been made greater, uh, the number of students who have had a more, a more equal footing to their peers. Um, and then you consider that Lynn has been doing this work for thirty-two years. It's simply staggering. Um, it, if, if, if we had a Hall of Fame, I think most of these people that we're talking about here tonight, Lynn included, uh, would be in that Hall of Fame. Uh, Ellen Kaiser has been a social studies teacher at Mount Greylock for the past twenty-five years, a quarter of a century of helping students understand history, understand society, understand cultures and understand their place in the world. Um, Ellen, just a remarkable career, a quarter of a century of serving students. Uh, Ellen will be with us through the first part of next year. Um, but, uh, we wanted and she wanted to be recognized with this group of folks who are retiring with, uh, this class of remarkable people. And so Ellen, thank you and congratulations. You've certainly made our little corner of the world and the world a much better place. Sue Lynch is retiring as the librarian of the Williamstown Elementary School after twenty-eight years. I don't know about all of you on, on this Zoom, but, uh, my elementary school librarian remains one of the people who is, is deepest and firmest in my heart. Uh, that, that's the, the, the gift that Sue has given to students. In terms of, of through opening the doors of the library and welcoming children is in essence, giving lots of kids, particularly the book lovers, it's, it's giving kids the keys to the kingdom. And it is, and it is literally giving them a passport to a trip around the world into other worlds. And, um, Sue, we thank you for your twenty-eight years of, uh, just opening hearts and opening minds by helping kids open books, uh, and thousands and thousands of kids over nearly a thirty-year career and, um, we may or may not find a librarian to take your place because librarians are few and far in between, but I suspect that nobody will truly replace you, Sue. And so thank you for that work. The next retiree that we want to honor is, uh, I will miss him sharing, uh, some of his own artwork through email and, uh, we have had some lovely conversations, consider him a friend as well as a colleague. Uh, Michael Powers, who has been a visual arts and technology teacher at Mount Greylock for twenty-six years. Uh, again, uh, Mount Greylock has some remarkable students, thousands and thousands and thousands of remarkable students. And I know that, um, all of them have their happy places and I suspect that there are many, many over the years whose happy place has been in the visual arts and the technology center with, uh, Mr. Powers. Um, learning to express themselves, uh, understanding how, how, um, how art can open doors, how technology can open doors and how art and technology can combine to, again, open doors and open minds. And, uh, Michael, I, I sincerely hope that, uh, just me to you, I hope that we get to stay in touch. Uh, but, but I hope that you have a very happy retirement. It's certainly well-earned after more than a quarter century of, uh, of, of teaching students at Mount Greylock Regional School. I'm going to come back to Brenda Rondo last, uh, and I'm gonna, gonna skip over Brenda for a second. Uh, Tracy Anne Spencer is retiring from the Williamstown Elementary School after twenty-seven years of, uh, of, of teaching students, uh, in several grade levels. I, I know that this was a difficult conversation, uh, in a, in a, uh, an internal conversation for, uh, Tracy Anne to have. I remember the day that we got her, her email notifying us of this. One could tell that this was a, this wasn't a, oh gosh, I think I'm gonna retire. It was an agonizing decision. And, um, again, when you consider the, the, uh, the gateways that elementary school teachers particularly open up for students. And when you consider uh, twenty-seven years of opening those gateways, it's simply stunning. And again, I, I, if I were a billionaire, I think I would invest in, um, in statues to honor, uh, you know, our educators, the same way that, uh, countries honor uh, soldiers and saints, because certainly, uh, Tracy Anne, uh, twenty-seven years of, of serving elementary school kids. No finer way to spend a professional life than that. So thank you and congratulations and a very happy retirement. Uh, Linda Wadika retired. I didn't take it personally, but she retired about a week after I started. So she and I had a nice conversation about, you know, was it something I said? Was it something I did? But, uh, Linda retired in, uh, in mid-November. Linda was a paraprofessional at Mount Greylock. Thirty-three years of serving students at Mount Greylock. Just again, simply stunning. There is, there, there are people that are put onto the planet with just, um, the, 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 just the right combination of, of intellect and dedication and a gigantic heart to love children, uh, and, and to love children, some of whom really need to be loved and need to be supported. And Linda, um, you've, you've been enjoying, uh, six or seven months of retirement, we hope. And we hope you enjoy decades more, well deserved, after thirty-three years of serving kids as a paraprofessional. And then, um, you know, coming back to Brenda. Uh, Brenda is our, is our lone retirement out of the central office. I think Joe kind of said it all when he talked about Brenda earlier this evening. That Brenda has, uh, has done everything there is to do in finance, uh, in our office. And, um, I am just grateful that the universe allowed me to get to know Brenda and to get to work with Brenda for six or seven months because she is just a special, special human being. And, um, she has forgotten more about municipal finance and regional school finance than most of us will ever know. She has forgotten more about the very complex software that we use to make sure money is accounted for and people get paid. Um, she probably could go and quadruple her salary and be the top consultant that exists, uh, with the, with the software company that makes the package that we use. Uh, and on top of it all, Brenda is just a, a lovely, warm, uh, kind human being. And, and as the new guy, uh, she made me feel like I was part of the team from, from before the moment I started. And, uh, I will always be very grateful to her. We wish her uh, years and years and decades and decades of, 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 of wonderful time of splitting her, her time between her home in Vermont and now her home in Texas, uh, where her heart really is because her grandchildren are there. And so Brenda, uh, congratulations and thank you for fifteen years of making sure that we stay solvent and stay legal. And, uh, we will miss you. And Brenda, like Suzie Gelati, can probably count on about a hundred and fifty phone calls and desperate emails next year um, to ask questions that she will have right, uh, on the top of her head. And so to all of these educators, uh, for their two hundred and forty-eight years of amazing service in, uh, taking care of and, and caring for children and helping children reach their potential and, and helping, uh, all of us, uh, operate as a school system. We say thank you. We say hats off and we say have a wonderful and lengthy retirement. And that is the end of my superintendent's report, Christina.
Thank you, Jake. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to move into executive session with intent to return to open session pursuant to MGL, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A two and twenty-one A three to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct a strategy session with respect to collective bargaining, Magia, all units.
So moved.
Carrie moves. Do I have a second? Julia seconds and, um, Joe will help us move into breakout rooms and then we can declare our aloneness. Yep, I just wanted to say that before we voted. All in favor?
Bo and I.
Connery, I.
I think we might have lost some folks, but.
It already popped up. That's why I was. People already went to room one.
Oops. Well, if you vote, I think we'll be okay. We can move into executive.
I'm bringing Carrie back. I've got the power to do that.
Magic. Elfin, by an I, did, are we there? I think so.
Yep.
I can vote out of order for once.
Yeah, go for it.
Bill, I.
Did we get moved out too quickly?
Yeah, it's your turn to, uh, we, you're. Yeah, it's your turn to we you're the last one to vote.
Green, I.
Okay, thank you.
Now we're gonna join?
It is 9:29. We're moving into executive session. Yes, thank you.
And Christina, shall I pause the recording?
Yes, that would be great. Do we get everybody back? We're all here, right? Okay, it is 10:13 PM. We are back in open session. And the next item on our agenda is non-union personnel unused vacation discussion. And I think we can make a motion at this point. I would like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to work with non-union personnel to resolve the unused vacation time for the period of 2020, 2021 school year due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay.
Carrie, seconds. Any discussion?
For the impact of minutes, for I would just like to state deep gratitude for the sacrifices that people made through this year to push themselves and not, you know. Yeah, sorry, that was. Thank you, Chris. Push themselves. I, you know, to the to the limit for the for the benefit of our children in this district and appreciate that tremendously.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
By an eye.
Green, I.
Bill, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Okay. We'll try to get through this next agenda item quickly. Upcoming meetings, Finance Subcommittee meeting, June 17th at 4:00 PM. Is that correct, Carrie? Tentative School Committee meeting, this would be a regular our regular session meeting, July 15th at 6:00 PM. And I should backtrack and say, because it's not on here, we did discuss the possibility of having a special session on July 1st for the bid documents. There may be another special session in there too at some point. But we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Anticipated August School Committee meeting, August 12th at 6:00 PM. And then we should, we can talk briefly about dates for potential August workshops. And then the other thing I wanted to talk to you about, and I know it's really late and I apologize, is whether or not I I think we have the idea of two different retreats slash workshops. The one that we talked about with Jose and also the one around evaluations. And it may make sense to hunk that into two different two-hour sessions on two different days. Or if everyone would really rather just go ahead and get them, get it all done in one afternoon. Their their mind taxing discussions. So there is some there there is some argument to do it two different afternoons. But I can understand it's the summertime and people have limited. And hopefully, if you have families like mine that are finally fully vaccinated, you might be excited to get away a little bit this summer. I know I am. I haven't touched an ocean for three years, so excited to do that. But so I just wanted to briefly talk about that. And then we could talk about if there are particular times within the summer months that would be better for people. So thoughts around that? Or maybe everyone's sleeping. I don't know.
I think my preference would be two two different meetings for fear of falling victim to meeting fatigue. Not that I'm falling victim to it now, but I might.
They're both important discussions. And so I do agree with you. And if it makes sense, we can, we can, you know, ask Stacy if she can circulate something with availability to carve that out because I know we're encouraging everyone who hasn't taken vacation to take vacation. And I know of two people that need to do that. So, you know, and we may be leaving on them some too. So if that makes sense and people want to do it in two different chunks, and I can work with Stacy and Jose in terms of timing for the policy committee to to have that discussion and decide what what they might want to do if they want to do a pre-survey and figure out how to how to get that done.
Carrie. Another thought, we had talked, I think, at one point about having a superintendent evaluation subcommittee. And the superintendent's goals have to be done in open session as part of a regular meeting. So this is really more about training the school committee to on how to do the superintendent's goals and evaluation within the current framework of whatever that framework is in the state system. So I don't think Jake needs to be there for for that session unless he wants to be, unless he thinks it would be helpful to hear what the school committee is hearing. But my question, to go back to the beginning, is do we want to have? Do we want to delegate this to a subcommittee that can then do the bulk of that work? Or do we want to do it as a full committee, which is the way we've always done it?
Yeah, so I think. I think that's a good question. I think I think it's important with, I guess my thought would be, and obviously everyone can agree or disagree. There are so many new members. It might be really important. It it might be valuable for us all to go through the process together just because it's new to everyone. We haven't done it. I've been on the committee for three years and it's, you know, I don't fully have a grasp on it. So it might be beneficial for the full committee to go through the process together. And Jake may have some input in terms of how the process has worked for him in the past. So I don't know.
Okay, well, that's also potentially something that we can cover in a school committee meeting in the fall.
Yeah.
When when Jake presents his goals for the year. So I think I think the, well, I guess what I'm trying to say is the the retreat or retreats should focus on work that the school committee needs to do either on itself or for itself. If there are specific things that we need to do. Yeah, I'll just leave it at that. So let's just schedule one for now on the policy or the policy protocol, ethics, and school committee goals. And for me, the question is, do we want to try to work with someone from MAS C? Or do we want to just do this internally? And is early August a good time for people? Like maybe that first week in August before the regular meeting? Yeah.
I'm currently slated to be out of town for both those weeks. I I'm the first two weeks of August. But I don't, I mean, I just can't imagine we're gonna find a week where somebody isn't out of town. So I don't know what to do with that.
Well, what about the third week in August?
We can try. Be in town for the third week of August.
You will be?
I will be for the third week of August for sure.
So that's the week of August 16th.
I'm in town. Jose?
Yeah, I should be here.
Okay.
Hey.
Steve out there? We might have lost Steve.
Yeah, I'm looking at my calendar and I've got a bunch of commitments in August. But worst case, I should I should be able to at least zoom in for for two hours.
Although this is the one, Steve, that you'd wanted.
I know. So I will. The problem is, I'm looking at my calendar right now. There's a bunch of things with question marks.
Yeah.
Happen or not. And so my feeling is most of these things will end up being zoomed themselves. And so I should be able to do this in person.
Okay, so we will aim for August 16th and then try to figure out some time to workshop around goals and evaluations for the superintendent, how that all works. And then we can, in terms of the MAS C rep, we can certainly invite them. My thoughts are almost, I would it it might be nice to have them participate, but it also might be nice for us to drive the conversation, but have their input. I don't, does that make sense?
I apologize. I had to step away.
No worries. So in terms of the MAS C rep, Carrie, my thought is for us to drive the conversation, but have a rep so that if we have questions, they might be able to, you know, give us some guidance, but have the conversation being led by us or not have MAS C come in and do a presentation on policies and.
Right, right. And I think that's something that they're happy to do.
Okay. All right. Sounds great. So Jose and the policy team will sort of figure out what that agenda is. And I, is that how that would work, Carrie? And then I would, I can reach out to our MAS C rep and find out if she has availability that week.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right, awesome. Um, oh, I was saying that this was the last thing, but there is one more thing. Within the items not reasonably anticipated by the chair within 48 hours. And that is the letter that is in your packet. We have to, as a school committee, and Carrie, you can explain this process a little bit better. But when we receive gifts, the school committee has to approve of them. And I don't know if it's over a certain value or if it's all gifts.
It's cash gifts. If it were equipment or buildings or, you know, there there are different rules for different kinds of gifts. I mean, within that policy, there are different categories for different kinds of gifts. And this this happens to have been a cash gift. And I just completely forgot to submit the letter. So that's why it's within 48 hours because I only sent the letter to Christina today. So that's that's on me. I'm sorry about that.
So the only question I have is I think we can't vote on this, but we can we can generally agree that it's something that we would approve, right? And then vote on it officially in the next meeting? Or how does that, how will?
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I think it's there so that it can for it's there for sake of transparency so that it can be shared with you all and with the public in a timely fashion. But then we can just vote on it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Unless that's an issue in terms of the fiscal year. I don't remember when our fiscal year ends.
It it ends June 30th. But I don't think it's a problem at all to record.
To recognize it afterward. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great, great. So that's it.
Not something the state will care about.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Curtis moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Julia, seconds. Any further discussion? Thank you, Joe, for sitting through three over four-hour meetings in a row, three days in a row.
Wow, man.
He's forgotten already. He's looking at you like he wasn't keeping track, Christina. What are you doing? Making him feel worse.
Well, I I was capped out at two, so I'm I'm impressed with him being able to do it three nights in a row. Okay, all in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an eye.
Green, I.
Bill, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. It is 10:28 PM and we are adjourned. And thank you, everyone, very much.
Let's go red.